Alright, everyone. The time has come and passed for the the open public hearing. I want to make sure I get it right. It's in the record. The time has come and passed, uh, four o'clock for the open public hearing. We will now call the public hearing to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton, present.
Alderman Bolton says, "Present."
Alderman Segren.
Alderman Segren says, "Present."
Alderman Mosio.
Here.
Alderman Mosio says, "Present."
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsome.
Alderman Newsome says, "Present."
Alderman Turner. Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Rivera says, "Present."
Alderman Florian. Alderman Taylor.
Alderman Florian says, "Present." Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present. The meeting is called to order. Brief remarks from myself, then it will be turned over to corporate counsel. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. The topic of today is entertainment, which includes casino, has been discussed in our community for over thirty years. Today is an exciting time to be in Waukegan. This is a forum for the public to learn and come up with questions and comments. We're looking forward to getting this information from developers and hearing from the community. Today's hearing will be recorded and posted at a later date, so if you can't stay for the entire time, you'll still get a chance to watch the whole hearing. I'm now going to hand the mic over to corporate counsel, who can explain their process for today.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mayor indicated, this is a public hearing. It's my job to tell you what the ground rules are. There will be a total of four hours available for all of the presentations and discussion tonight. The theater closes at eight o'clock due to union rules, and we, it's a hard stop, we're not going to be able to extend it past that time. Each developer that's, and there are five of them, gets a total of thirty minutes to make their presentation and answer questions from the alderman. The order of presentation is by random chance, and each of the presentations will be divided in half, fifteen minutes for presentation, fifteen minutes for the alderman's questions. Following the presentation of five proposals, there will then, our consultant will follow, and he will primarily explain, and I'll let him go into more detail about what he does he's doing, of course. Generally, he's going to explain the process that he uses, some of his credentials, his process that he uses to do the vetting, and how he makes recommendations to the city council for the better understanding of the proposals for the alderman, for the elected officials that have to make whatever decision is made. We'll be using, uh, we'll give you an overview of the various proposals. I believe he's going to be using the developers' numbers, which will later on be vetted to see if they are good numbers, bad numbers, high, low, whatever. But they are just numbers at this point in time that have been developed and provided by the developers. The consultant then will take all the information and all of whatever other comments there are from the public, as well as any elected officials and staff, and ultimately read their opinion and a recommendation that'll be in the, probably the first week or two of October. Following the consultant, there will be audience time. Each individual that wishes to speak will have two minutes. That's two, one, two, not three. I know we're used to three minutes from city council meetings, but because we have a limited amount of availability of time tonight, we are giving you each two minutes. Now, with that, please understand that you may submit written comments either online or in hard copy by dropping a piece of paper off, either mailing it or dropping it off to clerk's office at the City Hall, 100 North Martin Luther King Drive. That opportunity will exist for two weeks to October 2nd, when we will close public comment. Hopefully, that will give everybody a full and fair opportunity to get whatever comments you wish in. I would ask, and we all ask, that considering how many people there are that may wish to speak, that you consider that keeping your comments as brief as possible, we allow a lot, two minutes, but if you can say it in thirty seconds, I think that's fairer to your Finally, please avoid repetition. If we've heard it five times, the chances are good that repeating it a sixth, seventh, eighth, and tenth time isn't going to make much of an impact. If you just want to say, "I agree with Fred, or Sally, or Joe," or whatever it is, that's fine, too. You also should feel free to ask questions. We may not be able to answer your questions tonight. They may be directed to specific developers. What we will do is, we will gather all of the questions, and we will sift through them, the ones that we can answer, we will post answers on the website. During the comment period, I should have mentioned that the comments are sent to our online website at casino@waukeagangill.gov. And if you go to the main website of the city of Waukegan, just Google "Waukegan," you'll find our website. There'll be links to that. That'll make it easy for you to put on your comments. Finally, the, uh, there are comment sheets and some questionnaire forms that are being circulated, so they're available. You don't have to use them. If you'd like to, they're intended to make it easier for you to file your own comments with the city. If you want to do it in some other format, that'd be absolutely fine, too. So, with that, I'll conclude my comments, and those are the rules. Thank you.
Join us is Alderman Taylor, from the ninth ward. So right now, we're going to draw numbers, draw names, who will be the first presenter. The first presenter will be Waukegan Development Associates. The second presenter will be Potawatomi. The third presenter will be Rivers. The fourth presenter will be North Point. And the final presenter will be Full House. Uh, Waukegan Development Associates, please.
Here we are.
Alright, here you go. So they just want to go up, they want to go up to the podium. You guys know what to do.
Good evening, folks. Mayor Cunningham, members of the city council, aldermen, staff, members of the community, I am pleased to be here to talk about our exciting Casino Fontana project. I'm Bob King, and I'm the president of Carroll Properties Company. My company is a successor company to a family-owned real estate company that was started by my father in nineteen forty-one, and as such, I pretty much grew up in the real estate development business. I'm pleased to be here with my partners, but certainly Andy Hochberg, the other principal in this operation, and a host of our other teammates. And with the permissions of the city council and members of the public, Andy and I will build Casino Fontana, which is going to be the next great tax-paying, profitable, transformational casino to be built right here in Waukegan. So now, let me show you a very abbreviated video of our Fontana vision. It is abbreviated because of our time constraints, but my team and I, I can tell you for sure that we are very excited about the potential of Fontana, since we believe that it can and will be a transformational product, building for not only Fountain Square, but as well the city of Waukegan. Every dollar that we spend on Fontana will have a multiplier effect throughout this community, meaning the dollars we spend either for construction or for philanthropic work that we're going to do here, those dollars become income to the folks up here. And so the multiplier effect goes across the entire region. Andy's going to talk a little bit about the philanthropic aspirations that we have for Fontana. Now, our group, Waukegan Development Associates, is the right team to realize a Fontana vision for four other reasons beyond philanthropy. First, our team already controls ten acres of property in Fountain Square. When this property is combined with adjacent city-owned land, we'll have a wonderful site of almost forty acres, and that site will offer unparalleled advantages, possibilities, and space. Space to build a superior casino with ample surrounding green space for community, festival, and public events. Second, our plans are open, transparent, and more importantly, they're achievable. We tried, we've hired outside consultants to give us realistic gaming projections based on the current state of our U.S. economy, current national gaming and regional trends, and the competitive landscape, gaming landscape that we see for Fontana. We have great confidence in our numbers and our financial expectations for Fontana. More importantly, we're having great conversations with lenders and equity providers, and I know we can get this deal done. Third, our team has the experience necessary to build Fontana, and the gaming experience and flexibility to deliver a state-of-the-art operation. Both Andy and I have built, managed millions, hundreds of millions of dollars of real estate projects over the years. I've known him for over a decade, beginning with our work together on RFP, on another major commercial development. In addition, Chesapeake Gaming is a, who's going to be our casino operator, is a huge asset to this, to our operation. My teammate, Peter Lingori, will discuss Chesapeake in detail. They have just a wealth of gaming experience, and they've had a lot of gaming success. Fourth, our group has significant minority participation, as called for in the Illinois Gaming Act, and I can assure you, as a proud African-American businessman, I, we're going to keep our promises to this community regarding minority participation at all levels in the development and operation of Casino Fontana. Period, long and short. Now, again, Peter Lingori is here from Chesapeake. I'm going to introduce him to you in a minute, but last but not least, let me introduce my partner and friend, Andy Hochberg, who has been a great businessman, a notable philanthropist, and my friend, again, as I said, for over ten years. Together, we intend to deliver the finest regional casino ever constructed in this, our wonderful state of Illinois. Thanks, everyone.
You got this, please.
Alright, thanks. Thank you very much, Bob. I'm very excited by the opportunity to be your partner again, as we work to provide Waukegan with a first-class, community-oriented development. I currently serve as a CEO of Next Realty, a Chicago-area acquisition and development company, which I began in nineteen ninety-eight. Next Realty has completed more than five hundred million dollars of transactions, and is a stable of over two-hundred-and-fifty investors who've supported our projects. Our portfolio includes many properties we've held for decades, and several properties in Lake County. I'm happy to acknowledge two of my long-term partners, Eteri Zavzlovsky and Jack Ramirez. Eteri handles our investment and capital strategy, and Jack is our vice president of finance. Jack handles our accounting for more than a hundred entities and a hundred-and-eighty tenants. Previously, I was the CEO of Sport Mart. Hopefully, many of you remember those stores and the feeling when you bought equipment or sports apparel for yourself or your families. And those of you who are shoppers in Vernon Hills, Wheeling, or elsewhere, I appreciate your support. I led the IPO of the company, gaining valuable experience financing large transactions. Philanthropy is very important to me. I volunteer about twenty-five percent of my time and contribute to many organizations. I have significant experience in raising money for endowment projects and performing governance roles. Previously, I served on the board of the Illinois Council Against Handgun Violence, and many years ago, on the Lake County Affordable Housing Commission. As a result of that work, we're excited about the introduction of the Waukegan First Foundation, an organization that will provide important funding to initiatives in the communities connected to the project, beginning with Waukegan. It's already partially funded, and represents a long-term mission to assist the community. It would be a shame if the significant benefits of the casino project were absorbed in the short term without any long-term planning for the community. An early focus of our donations will be to work with the Waukegan schools that are not a part of the Fountain Square taxing district. I'm excited to spend a few minutes to tell you about Casino Fontana. We decided on the Italian fountain theme to emphasize the Fountain Square location and to recreate exciting water features aesthetically pleasing to our customers and the community. You can see in the middle is the casino project at ninety-one thousand feet. To the right is a, would be a temporary casino and/or brew pub, and the top in the orange is our multipurpose facility, and then finally, just above that, the outdoor space for special purpose and festival events. Casino Fontana will total thirty-eight acres, ten acres larger than competing projects. The additional property will provide tremendous flexibility in planning and executing the project. We look forward to working with the city of Waukegan in order to complete this exciting development. The additional property should allow us to generate stronger tax revenues and overall greater project flexibility. You can see some renderings of what the project will look like. This is the project at night incorporating all forty acres. In addition to that, the front of the casino, followed by a couple of shots of what the interior will look like. As requested by the RFQ, Waukegan Development Associates engaged in an economic impact study, which found significant tax and employment benefits for this project. Our study found that our project will create two-hundred-and-seventy-four construction jobs, tax proceeds of seven million dollars, six-hundred-and-seventy-five full-time equivalent casino jobs, paying out about thirty million dollars in wages annually. Indirect jobs and wages represent a significant additional percentage of these amounts. Direct tax proceeds from all sources to Waukegan, North Chicago, and Park City, along with Lake County, are expected to be about ten million a year, with indirect proceeds representing about six-hundred thousand a year. I'm now pleased to introduce Pete Legori, from Chesapeake Gaming Group, our casino operator.
Good evening. My name is Pete Legori, and I'm the president and CEO of Chesapeake Gaming Group, the proposed operator for Casino Fontana. I'd like to share a few thoughts about Chesapeake with you tonight. First, Chesapeake's team has been working together as a team for most of twenty years, most recently led by me, CEO and president of Majestic Holdco, from March two thousand twelve to this past March, when we sold Majestic Star Casinos in Gary, Indiana, and prior to this, as a CFO and then president of Hyatt Gaming, which I did for over twenty, over fourteen years. All of the Chesapeake team members have worked with me at either Majestic or Hyatt Gaming. I'm gratified to have these amazing executives with me now for this project. Some of the Chesapeake team have agreed to come tonight, and I'd like to just ask them to briefly stand up and say hello, if you would, gentlemen and ladies. Thank you. Thanks, team. Chesapeake has a long history of working with a project manager that we've identified, John Ryden of the Tiden Group. John has spent a number of years at Hyatt in the development group, working with Hyatt Gaming on several projects, including the construction of Grand Victoria and Elgin. John is also here tonight. Thank you, John, for coming. And another team member here tonight is Michael Schindler, who was Hyatt Gaming's chairman, also my boss. Michael, thank you for coming. Second, our experience in this market is unparalleled. As we have mentioned, our team has extensive Chicagoland experience that comes through and with oversight of properties in both Indiana and Illinois. If we look at residents within a twenty-five-mile radius of Waukegan that have visited a casino in the last twelve months, Chesapeake executives have touched, in some way, about forty percent of these people. Experience comes from many different sources. Building casinos, which Chesapeake has built over fifteen properties in its career, running casinos, and equally important, managing change in a market. We believe the last trade is vital, is vital, for a long-term success of a casino project. One thing I know is that the Chicago gaming market is in for massive change in the coming years, and you'll want to pick an operator that has been through some battles, knows how to take a punch, has to, how to give one, and Chesapeake is that operator. We have the battle scars to prove it. We've also applied this experience to our projections and expectations of Casino Fontana's performance, and we are confident that we can drive the anticipated revenue, if not more, as we've projected to do. To test our model, WDA hired an independent gaming consultant. Their final report, which was submitted to the city's gaming consultant, suggested that there's some room to increase our revenue projections for our monthly, monthly revenues. No other respondent has this depth, breadth, and tenure of experience in the greater Chicagoland market. We know the market, and we know what drives it. Third, our senior leadership team of all the respondents will be focused solely on Waukegan. Each other groups that'll be here tonight have at least one other operating casino or other gaming operation to be concerned with. Chesapeake will have its entire focus on how to position the Waukegan Casino as the finest regional casino in Illinois. We have no concerns about competition in the same jurisdiction, adjacent jurisdictions, or our own existing operations. Let me repeat this. Only Casino Fontana's leadership team will be solely focused on Waukegan. Fourth, Chesapeake has a strong track record of establishing community-centric programs to provide hiring for locals, diversity in hiring and purchasing, creating purchasing programs that benefit local businesses. We also work respectfully with other businesses in the community. We wanted to emphasize, as an example, we will not compete with this beautiful venue. This is a jewel, and it needs to be looked after. Inclusion of a food court in our design was done to allow local restaurateurs to join us and have direct access to high foot-traffic areas in the casino, and our phased approach to our potential hotel will ensure that we do not impact the local hospitality market. And fifth, Chesapeake is, like every other entity before you tonight, an accomplished casino operator. Its people are as familiar with each other as anyone else. Chesapeake is new only in name. Do not permit the newness of the entity to be equated with a startup. I have too much white hair, earned over thirty, thirty-five years plus in the gaming.
Thank you, gentlemen. Your time is fifteen minutes. It is the Alderman's time.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Alderman Florian from the eighth ward in Waukegan. Sorry about the lights. My first question is for you, Mr. Hochberg. I know you're partners with Michael Bond, and he also presented a proposal to run the casino in Waukegan. Can you clarify that for me?
Sure. Michael and I are partners in Tap Room Gaming. I'm a passive investor in that business. I'm more of a developer than a passive investor, so I decided to put my own handbook group together to apply for the casino license.
Okay, so you no longer are involved with Tap Room?
I'm currently a shareholder in Tap Room, but a passive minority one.
Okay. And my other question involves, you mentioned it in your presentation about the benefit to the Waukegan schools. In your proposal, you specifically say there's tax benefits to the Waukegan schools, which you realize there's not at Fountain Square, correct?
I apologize if that was mistaken. It's the opposite. My understanding is the Fountain Square area, the taxes that I pay on the land I currently own, do not go to the Waukegan schools. So consequently, the Waukegan First Foundation would be oriented toward providing opportunity for money for those schools that are not included in the taxing district.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for helping me clarify that.
Thank you. My name is Felix Rivera, and I just have one quick question regarding the local businesses. Has, has any type of a fork has been done on how the addition to the gaming terminals will affect the local businesses right now in Waukegan?
To clarify your question, what impact is the casino likely to have on current?
The current businesses, yeah.
My, my understanding is it's a few percent dilution to the, the current, uh, the current terminal operators.
Okay, thank you.
Ann Taylor, ninth ward, Alderman. My question is, how did you determine the amount that you were going to pay for the property for the casino?
The number, which we've disclosed, is seven million dollars, represented what we thought the project could support, based on our assumptions for revenues, expenses, construction costs, et cetera.
Okay, was that based on the ten acres? Because my research shows that that property was initially assessed at about one-point-two million. You bought it for nine-hundred-and-seventy-five, and then immediately it was, the taxes were reassessed on that, and it's now at, the value is seven-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand. So was that the property next door, based on what the ten acres that you're getting there?
No, no. The seven-million-dollar offer was for the, was based on the pro forma we put together for the casino project.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Keith Turner, Alderman of Sixth Ward. The seven million dollars offered, proposed to be offered for our, the land that the city owns, how would that, how would that be structured? Lump sum, seven million dollars, one and done, or over a period of time? How is that offer structured?
Well, we're looking forward to a negotiation with the city on that and other matters, but our contemplation would be very close to the time when the license is issued. So it would not be paid over time, it would be paid immediately.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm Alderman Bolton of the first ward. What are some barriers or challenges do you foresee for this project?
Well, obviously, we, we're still in the planning stages. We think that our plan, our initial plan, is pretty viable. We still have work to do, engineering work. We still have to work with the city to find out what kinds of perhaps construction conditions they may have. I don't think financing is going to be one of the big challenges, to be perfectly honest. I think that's going to be easy, or easy, not, financing is never easy, but it'll be easier in this environment than I think it would be perhaps in other environments. I think we have a few things that we're going to have to discuss, work out with the city in terms of traffic. in terms of traffic studies and how the traffic flows will work. I think if our, when our casino is built and is successful, clearly, you know, the traffic around Lakeside Drive is going to be very difficult, and we'll have to have some work done with that. But those are the things that come to mind, just off the top of my head. Anything, anything else, Andy, that you could think of?
Sorry, I got a question from someone else. So we'd like some clarification on the foundation and how the money will be allocated through the foundation. I know some of that is in your proposal, but if you could let the people here know, that would be helpful.
Sure. The Waukegan First Foundation has been formed, it's been initially funded. The game plan would be to include local individuals as members of the board of directors. We would be seeking proposals from the community. We'd be researching some of our own proposals. There's organizations that myself and my family have already supported, that we would probably continue to support. Our goal is to take that and really move it over time to a very significant foundation. My understanding is that in Elgin, they're able to create a foundation of over $100 million over time from proceeds from the casino to have various different community needs met. The real challenge with these kind of things is, is where, what do we want? Do we want money today, or do we want money tomorrow? And part of the point of the presentation I was making was to say, we really should balance that, because I think we've seen with other government-related transactions that the focus is on today, not tomorrow, and then there's no money built up over time for long-term community needs. So the basic outcome would be, money provided by the casino would go to needs created by, or identified by the community, and the needs identified by our management group, both. Yeah, thanks, Bob. It focuses like an endowment. If you're familiar with endowments, money gets paid in, it gets built up over time, and they take a distribution every year out of the corpus, 5%, 6%, 7%, whatever, and that becomes a permanent source of revenue for the community. As opposed to, a lot of times, we take transactions, we use them to fill budget holes, and then the money isn't there for the long run.
Alderman, any more questions? You gentlemen have about five more minutes to wrap it up, if you have some final words.
Again, let me thank you all very much for hearing this out. And in summary, we believe that Waukegan Development Associates is the right team for this project, because we have very high aspirational and philanthropic plans for the city of Waukegan. Our Waukegan First Foundation, run by really a noted philanthropist here in Chicago circles, that foundation is already partially funded, ready to go. We have additional acreage for, to build a great casino. We have a lot of green space planned for the casino, and that space will be available to have public events, festivals, community-oriented events. We have a transparent, realistic development strategy for Fontana. We have an expert and experienced development team in place to do this deal, just as soon as we're able to get the green light from United Folks. So again, and, oh, important, we have a very diverse development group, per the Gaming Act, per the Gaming Act itself and the spirit of the Act. I mean, the Act obviously wanted minorities to participate. We believe that, and we're going to make sure that that happens. So again, thank you for letting us come here tonight, and we look forward to working with you. And we respectfully ask that you allow us to continue to fight for the city of Waukegan by letting us go forward with Casino Fontana. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for having us here today. My name is Rodney Ferguson. I'm the CEO and General Manager at Potawatomi Hotel and Casino in Milwaukee. With me today, I have Jeff Crawford, the Attorney General for Potawatomi. I have John Repa, our gaming marketing consultant, and John Culligan, our architect from the Cunningham Group. The Waukegan Potawatomi Casino proposal is credible and transparent, and we will do what we say. We operate the largest and most successful casino in Wisconsin. We will bring that same experience to Waukegan. This will be our flagship casino in Illinois, and it will be the premier casino in the state. It will be bigger and better than any other casino in Illinois. And we also have the largest casino proposal. Now, this is not a defensive or market protection application that we presented. We will open with the most gaming devices and table games. We will offer 60% more gaming devices and almost two-and-a-half times more casino floor space than the smallest casino application. Our gaming floor will be the largest. We will have the most casino employees and construction workers. We know this from our Illinois customers who visit us in Milwaukee, that don't like crowded conditions at the local Illinois casinos. Players prefer a more open, comfortable feel of a modern casino like Potawatomi Hotel and Casino. This means more gaming revenue and property tax for the city of Waukegan. Potawatomi hires local, minority, and women. Potawatomi pays good wages and has great benefits. The Waukegan Potawatomi Casino will support training programs and local job seekers. We will sign a construction project labor agreement. We will form a strategic alliance with the city of Waukegan. We do not want to harm any downtown entertainment venues like the Genesee Theater here. We do not propose a large entertainment venue. We do not want to harm the local hotels here in Waukegan. We do not propose a casino hotel unless the occupancy levels reach a certain level that justifies a hotel. Instead, we will partner with local hotels. We will use our players' club to partner with and drive business to local venues like the Genesee Theater here, the local hotels, and other local businesses. We also will provide local shuttles, which will make it easy for our guests to patronize other local businesses. Potawatomi Hotel and Casino's low cost of capital allows us to afford more gaming devices, build a larger casino than applicants who are more highly leveraged, or who are dependent upon hedge funds or venture capital dollars. We do not need outside investors, period. We have an extremely strong financial statement, which allows us to offer the best casino for the city of Waukegan. Potawatomi is committed to responding to problem gambling. With trained staff and funding for behavioral health services, we will partner with local health and safety services to make sure that the casino assumes any burden from the estimated 1.8 million visitors per year coming to the casino. By the way, Waukegan Potawatomi Casino will be 100% minority-owned. This casino will run to serve this community. And now, for the pretty pictures. The casino will serve in this community. I'd like to bring up John Culligan, who will share that.
Hello, my name is John Culligan. I'm an architect and partner with Cunningham Group, and we've had the good fortune of designing the proposed Waukegan Potawatomi Casino. We've also been lucky enough to be a longtime member of the Potawatomi Development Team, and for, going on 10 years. In that time, we've worked together to transform the already-successful Milwaukee casino into a true entertainment destination that is one of the top draws in the state of Wisconsin. We've done that in conjunction with the Milwaukee community. We've worked very closely with City Hall and all of their departments, from zoning to planning to building. It's been a very transparent relationship that has led to a very successful, ongoing commitment on the part of the Potawatomi community to reinvest in the state of, sorry, in the city of Milwaukee, to the benefit of all, and we're very excited about providing that same team to the city of Waukegan. Next slide, please. A key component of our design process is what we like to refer to as, every building tells a story. And our intent is to tell the Waukegan story in the design of your casino. We do that through a series of design metaphors that reflect the culture, the history, and the site that we will be developing. If you look to the screen, you'll see a series of our very conceptual ideas for how we would utilize several of the Waukegan regional property highlights from the, the, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time seeing that. The lighthouse, the sea glass and fossils on the front facade that would be based on the industrial history of Waukegan and transformed into an energetic, kinetic, lighted facade. We also would develop a fine port to share that would reflect seagulls on Lake Michigan and sailboat spinnakers at the corner that become key components of the design. The other key component is that Potawatomi is committed to solar collectors on the roof, and also in terms of our sustainability commitment. We typically, and we've done this at Potawatomi, we've developed three categories for sustainability strategies that we, you know, look at in terms of each project with them. We have as category one, responsible design, and that's basically just do it, it makes sense, it's worth doing. Category two, good value, reasonable payback. We do that as well fairly regularly with Potawatomi. And then there's the long-term cost commitment on the part of a client that many times, it's a great idea, but it doesn't happen. I'm happy to say that in our time with Potawatomi, we have incorporated most of the strategies and categories one and two, and Potawatomi has committed to utilizing solar collectors as a renewable resource, as well as utilizing their anaerobic biodigester in Milwaukee to fuel additional energy concerns in Milwaukee. Site plan, basically, we've located the casino in the center of the site, flanked by a 500-stall parking lot, and also our three-level, 1,500-stall parking garage. The key here is that you want to make it easy access in and out for your clients and your customers, and also the public, general public that's passing through your, around your site. We have developed a very lush landscaping plan, and we've also provided four roads in and out of the site to try and reduce the amount of congestion at any one particular spot. In terms of the overall gaming floor, again, it's accessed from three main directions: the main port to share, the parking structure, and also the parking lot. The casino, as Rodney had mentioned, is very large. We've got about a 40 square foot per gaming position, square footage, which is very, very generous. And we've provided access and ease of flow through the site and the floor to the variety of restaurants and venues that will surround it. In terms of the future, and as Rodney again had mentioned, assuming that we do very, very successfully here, which we all believe is going to happen, we have proposed in the future the potential, and enlaid it out, a 200-room hotel that either Potawatomi or some other developer might put together. And that's really what we think of as the aspiration in the future. I thank you for your attention, and we look forward to working with all of you as we develop this project.
Thank you, John. Now, time for the numbers. John Repa, our gaming marketing consultant, has prepared a detailed feasibility study, which is the basis for the size and the revenue numbers of our proposal. We are prepared to bank on John's numbers, and you should as well. His analysis of the economic impact and financial benefits for the Waukegan Casino is summarized on Table 11 on pages 31 and 35 of our application. John?
Thanks, Rodney. I have been involved in gaming in Illinois and northwest Indiana for almost 25 years now, and have worked with virtually every operator in the market, as well as several tribes in the state of Wisconsin. And so our programming and our financial estimates are based upon a fountain of knowledge, with actual numbers rather than hypothetical assumptions. As you can see in this chart, Potawatomi, right out of the box, has the most gaming positions of any of the applicants, part of which is due to our strong belief in the market and not doing a phased approach for our development. The next slide shows the overall square footage for the proposals. As you can see, Potawatomi is the largest, with 130,000 square feet. And I believe the number for Rush is based on their existing Rivers Casino. The number that they're proposing was redacted, so we can only go with the information we were given. And Potawatomi has the largest number of employees in our proposal, and that's not only for full-time operations, but in the construction phase as well. And what this translates and means for the city of Waukegan is more money for the city of Waukegan. On an annual basis, over $12 million, and for that first three years of operations, revenues total to be over $37.2 million, stemming from Waukegan's share of the gaming tax, as well as admissions taxes and occupancy taxes that will be generated through the development of the casino itself.
Thank you, John. Finally, the lawyers.
Hello, my name is Jeff Crawford. I wear many hats for the Potawatomi. I am the Attorney General. I'm a tribal member. I'm also the president of our biodigester that produces green energy. I'm also a member of our project trading post, which in our language translates into Waukegan. And so the two points I want to make here quickly, as my time's running And so, the two points I want to make here quickly, as my time's running out, is that sustainability and suitability. We have a strong environmental record, and it's reflected in our casino operations, and we intend to bring that to this casino here in Waukegan. The second point is that anyone that's chosen here today, and we hope it's us, all have to go through the suitability determinations and will have to be licensed. We have brought on our team, Donna Moore, the former general counsel with the Illinois Gaming Board. She wrote some of the regulations for the applications, and she is working with us on our application. We believe that we have a strong application, that we do not have any prior issues with the Illinois Gaming Board. We don't have any prior violations, and we bring a diverse ownership in terms of not having multiple properties in the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you. I'm not sure which one of you is going to want to answer this question, but I have the numbers here from the Illinois, let me make sure I say this right, the revenue comparisons from the Illinois Gaming Board. And from 2006 through 2018, which are probably the most current numbers, gaming revenue has fallen pretty dramatically in Illinois, pretty much across every casino except Rivers, which is our most successful casino in Waukegan. So as you presented, sorry, that wasn't meant as a plug for them. You presented that your numbers are the strongest, and we're adding six new casinos to Illinois plus putting slot machines at O'Hare and I believe Arlington Racetrack. So how can you defend the fact that you project your numbers are going to be so much better? I know you have more machines as one answer to that, but with six new casinos coming in, how is that going to be possible?
The one thing I didn't mention in the beginning, I've been in the industry since 1983, worked for nine different casinos in five different states. In a number of those states, new casinos open up in those jurisdictions. And generally, what happens when you open up one new casino, the market grows, and that's what we anticipate to happen here. The fortunate part for us is, we've been in this market for the last three decades, and our goal is to extend our brand into this particular market, into Waukegan. So we expect to be able to generate these numbers based on extending our current brand and utilizing our player base that we currently have in Milwaukee. So we don't anticipate any challenges in terms of not being able to meet the numbers that we had projected.
You don't anticipate just taking customers from Potawatomi to the north and Rivers to the south?
What I'm saying is, the existing market we have here in northern Illinois, yes, we expect to lose some in Milwaukee, but at the same time, we expect Waukegan to receive those same players as well. But we also expect more players to come to Waukegan as well as into Milwaukee, because that's generally what happens when you open up a new casino, there's more awareness about casinos. The Chicagoland market is a huge, huge market that hasn't really been tapped to its full potential. I think that's part of the reason why the government decided to expand it to the level that he's expanding. So there's market, there's room for growth.
Okay. My second question is, what about any behavioral health issues around addiction to gaming and stuff like that? Have you experienced currently in the casinos you have, and what do you plan to do to help prevent that, treat that, whatever, going forward with this casino?
Yes. At Potawatomi Hotel Casino in Milwaukee, we have some policy procedures in place to address self-exclusion as well as excluding those guests who don't follow the rules. But from a behavioral standpoint, we are the largest contributor to the Wisconsin Council on Problem Gambling. We also contribute to the National Council on Problem Gambling. One of our leaders at the casinos actually sits on the board for the Wisconsin Council on Problem Gambling, and we will establish a similar type of program for the Waukegan
Well, since part of my questions been answered, first off, I'd like to say kudos to you for making a lot of your presentation in Spanish, because a lot of our community is Hispanic, and I think it's wonderful that they're able to see this presentation.
Thank you.
I am the Ninth Ward Alderman where this casino will be going. One of my concerns in this is this looks like a little bit larger casino in height and both based on the Potawatomi, Milwaukee, very colorful, very bright. I have residence to the west of this casino. Is there a way that we can tame down the lighting just a little bit?
Yes. As a matter of fact, as Friday, we met with the local hotel operators, which had a concern regarding the apartments along the road. And we actually addressed the issue with the architect. So he's working on doing a slight modification, the symbolic boat flag that you see that's illuminated, that was illuminated on the screen, we just kind of make, either dim that down or move it to the other side to kind of reduce some of the light in that particular area. But we're very sensitive to that.
Hello, Greg Moisio, Third Ward Alderman. Two questions. In your proposal, you guys do not propose a temporary site, which I agree with. Could you maybe explain that to the public? And is there a tipping point on, or maybe explain what the tipping point would be for the proposed hotel as far as occupancy goes? Could you maybe explain those two things to the public?
Sure.
Thank you.
First, the temporary casino is one we tossed around, and again, haven't been in other jurisdictions, when you open up a temporary facility in conjunction with a permanent facility, you don't get the same experience. And that's the last thing we need is to open up a sprung structure and have not the same condition that you would expect in a permanent facility. And the infrastructure cost to getting fiber on the site, wherever the site is, to have that up and running by the time you get the new facility up and running. Now, to your second question, what was your second question again?
That's a tipping point on the hotel.
Oh, yes, okay, I'm sorry.
If there is one, there's a number to be.
Sure. Currently, the market is around 69, 70% occupancy levels right now. Now, generally, what happens in the casino market, you get a lot of reward play and a lot of hotel occupancy. Once those existing hotels in the area reach a level like 90%, at that point, they'll be pretty much maxed out, particularly on weekends, holidays, et cetera. That will trigger us to consider building a hotel along the size of a 200-room to accommodate all those guests. The last thing you need is to turn away guests. Part of the reason why we built a second tower in Milwaukee was because we were turning away a significant number of guests. That would be the logic we would use.
Thank you. Again, I'm Keith Turner, Alderman, Sixth Ward, and similar question is your casino Fontana. What's your offer, proposed offer for the land that the city owns, and how would that
So we have offered 15% plus or minus of the appraised value. My understanding is that the city has old appraised values and more recent appraised values, and from there, we'll negotiate. In terms of how it's paid, how do you want it paid, is the only question. So we can do it upfront like a normal real estate closing, or we can spread it out, you know, that, we're flexible.
Alderman Bolton, First Ward. Will you be using our union workers?
During our, excuse me, our construction phase, yes, we will be using, we'll be developing a project labor agreement with the union workers.
And how is that communicated or articulated?
Well, before the actual construction project gets started, we actually meet with the union workers and formalize an actual agreement. So before any construction worker comes on site, there will be agreement in place.
And with myself working in the field of addiction, not just as an Alderman, also in the field of addiction, I heard you make comments and reference to behavioral health. But how are you communicating these standards or these ethical concerns to the public?
Sure. Within the casino, every day, again, having over 6 million visitors come through the property, of course, you're going to have issues such as problem gambling. And our job through our team and our policy procedures is to establish a recognition of identifying those individuals. I would say on a weekly basis, we have folks who will actually self-exclude themselves because we have posters throughout the property. We have team members who monitor and watch guests who basically a little bit in over their head. And we reach out to them, provide them with collateral and material in terms of who they can go and see to basically get some help. And I mean, occasions after a year or two, they may come back to us saying they have satisfied their specific requirements and want to get back in. And part of our, you know, self-exclusion process, we have a committee who evaluates the situation with each and every player who's in that situation before we actually let them back in the door.
Alderman, any other?
So I've been asked to ask you about your environmental part of the proposal and exactly, or specifically about cumulative impact and if there are precautions to reduce the cumulative impact and maintaining those standards throughout the...
Jeff answered that one.
So I have a chart with really big numbers on it that talks about cumulative impacts. I don't have it on me right now. But right now, we operate a biodigester in Milwaukee. It takes liquid organic waste that would normally go down the drain into the water system or gets dumped on the fields and gets into the water table. And so, the idea behind this is if we can collect all of this waste, turn it into green energy, then that would improve the environment. In fact, 38% of our feedstock actually comes from Illinois right now. And so, we are taking that Illinois waste, turning it into energy, that's green energy. And so, what we are going to, we're estimating based on the restaurants, that there would be 100, let me get the numbers right here, 100 tons of food waste that would be produced by, through the restaurants, that's just normal practice with that kind of volume of people. And so, we would take that waste and we would ship it off to our anaerobic biodigester. The solar that we're talking about here, when you want to reduce the overall impacts on the environment, what you got to do is build your buildings, new ones, to the LEED standards so that they use less energy. And that's, everyone is going to tell you that they're going to build to the LEED standard. But you can only make a building so efficient. So what you have to do at some point is start producing your own green energy, which is what we're doing through the biodigester. But we're also going to put into our facility solar panels. It's not like this is a new thing for us. We have almost, we have 18 buildings that we do this on right now, including our casinos, and we're going to put eight, solar on eight more buildings. In addition to all of that, we also have 60 million renewable energy credits that we buy every year. So all of the electrical use of our facilities and our enterprises are offset through our renewable energy credit purchases, and those dollars are used to help improve the overall impact on the environment.
Okay, thank you for that. And then one more question. Alderman Bolton asks about union workers for the construction of the casino. What about the ongoing employees of the casino? Will those also be union workers or...
Generally, you don't talk about unions, employees. Kind of like the philosophy that I've had over the years is, if you treat the employees right, you don't really need a union. And you can really wind up putting your operation in jeopardy, particularly in your revenue-producing areas, if you decide to, say, go on a strike. But my job as an operator is to make sure that our team is, one, given the tools to do their job, being compensated fairly, being given great benefits, and anything we can do to make sure that they have a comfortable lifestyle. So when you take care of the team members, there's usually no reason for anyone to have any discussions regarding union becoming into the operation. To my knowledge, there hasn't been any discussion in Milwaukee for the past 28 years, and that's the way we pretty much like it.
What about restaurants and will they be local? Will you be bringing in, like, well-known restaurants, or what is the plan for that?
Yeah. In our plan, we have, I think, seven restaurants, six restaurants, a sports bar slash sportsbook. And generally, we operate internally. It all depends on what's needed.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Potawatomi.
Good afternoon. I want to thank the mayor and the aldermen for this opportunity to speak to you all. And I'd like to thank everybody for attending, as well as all of the team members from the Rivers Casino who've come here today. I'm Neil Bloom, Chairman of Rush Street Gaming. With me is Greg Carlin, the CEO of Rush Street, as well as Bill Karstangin, the CEO of Churchill Downs. Churchill is a public company with a $5 billion market cap, who owns the Kentucky Derby, 11 casinos across the country, and is licensed in 40 jurisdictions. We and Churchill make an exceptional team for this project. We jointly own and control Rivers Displayns. With Rush Street running the day-to-day operations, Rivers Waukegan would be set up the same way. Selecting an operator is a huge decision for your city. Our group will generate the highest revenue for Waukegan, has the most certainty of delivering what you want, the best track record for developing highly-successful casinos, and a reputation for integrity. My background is real estate development. I grew up in modest means. I was raised by a single mother. I started J&amp;B Realty from scratch without a dime 50 years ago, and it became one of the biggest developers of first-class real estate in the United States. The companies I've started and have developed or acquired, have developed or acquired over $60 billion of prime real estate. We went into the casino business 17 years ago and are the leading developer of regional casinos in North America, having built six highly-successful regional facilities from the ground up at a cost of $3 billion. Developing casinos is an extension of the real estate business. It sets us, it sets us apart from other casino operators as we have substantial development experience. We have a proud history of working hard and collaboratively with local leaders and residents in our host cities to deliver transformational economic development in the projects we've done. As opposed to pictures and promises of what may come, we are going to show you what we've actually done and are eager again to do again for Waukegan. Here are some examples. First is before and after pictures for the Schenectady, New York Casino. And we've included a quote from the mayor of Schenectady. Quote, "Rivers has been a catalyst for economic development and tourism in the area and has created numerous opportunities for our residents. Rivers has shown a strong commitment to hiring and training local residents and using local vendors." vendors." End quote. We've submitted similar letters from other host cities. Next are before-and-after pictures of our casino in Philadelphia, the only one in the city right now. Next is a picture of Pittsburgh, which includes a nice quote from the Pittsburgh City Councilman. All of these were developed, of course, by us. And last but not least is a picture of our casino in Displayns, the highest grossing casino per position in the U.S. We do more than two times the business of any other casino in Illinois where we all have the same number of positions. Rivers Waughkegan will produce higher revenue than all of the other applicants, according to independent consultant revenue projections, which projections greatly exceed our projections than all of the projections submitted by the other applicants. To make it clear, we reviewed the materials that have been sent in as part of everybody's proposal, and we put them together in a chart. Look at this chart. Rivers is projected to have annual gaming revenue of almost $100 million more per year, than North Point, which has the lowest projection. These are the projections of each applicant, not our projections, except the projections prepared for us by our consultant. Waughkegan and surrounding communities receive 5% of the gaming revenue. The higher gaming revenue means higher revenue for Waughkegan. Applying the 5% to the different projections, our project means millions of more dollars for Waughkegan annually, four to five million per year than the three lowest projections, and up to 100 million more over twenty years. Now, why are we going to make more revenue than the other applicants? So why are we going to make more revenue? We have a database of close to 700,000 customers whom we can market to. This was developed at the Rivers and Displayns. We've invested over $150 million in the River brand, which is well-known for high-end experience with exceptional service. Our customers are good customers in the Chicago market. Our property there has the highest revenue per visitor in the market. And last but not least, if you pick someone else, they're going to be competing with the Rivers and Displayns. This is very important, what I'm now going to say. It is important to understand that our ownership of Displayns is a plus for Waughkegan, not a conflict. The customers we have from Lake County and Wisconsin would love to have a closer Rivers option, which would keep gaming dollars in Illinois. Rivers Waughkegan would be best suited to capture this business. Now, here is a fact that is critical. Rivers Displayns will always have a higher gaming tax rate than Waughkegan because of the progressive slot gaming tax rate in Illinois. Thus, if anything, we are incentivized to send business to Waughkegan rather than Displayns. So in that sense, Waughkegan is not at a disadvantage, they're at an advantage, and we do not have a conflict. This is the exact opposite of the Potawatomi's, who pay a significantly lower tax rate in Wisconsin than in Illinois. I think their rate there is somewhere around 8%. The rate in Illinois is massively higher. Also, our goal isn't to hit the Waughkegan VGT business. VGT business is typically convenience-oriented. We attract gaming customers from a broad geographical area, looking for an exciting casino experience, which is why we have included a Gibson-sponsored restaurant at Rivers Waughkegan, because they're known throughout the region. Rivers Waughkegan will have a much lesser impact on Waughkegan VGTs than any others, just like Rivers Displayns was far less impacted by VGTs than any other Illinois casino. We've offered $11 million upfront for the land as a minimum. We are willing to negotiate a different arrangement that can include an annual payment structure. We are flexible. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to my partner, Greg Carlin.
So financing greenfield casino developments is very challenging in any market environment, and market conditions can change rapidly. One of our strengths is our financing capabilities. So our current plan is to fund this project with equity and some external debt. But our ownership group has the financial resources to fund this entire project with all equity if the debt markets were to change. Something like this happened back in 2008 with the Great Recession, and our company has financed more casinos, financed three casinos through the Great Recession successfully. In addition, our experienced develop team has delivered all six of our casino projects on time and on budget, and that's also an important fact. And we are sizing this project to meet the projected revenue, with room to expand. Phase one is actually 180,000 square feet, not the 43,000 shown in the earlier presentation. And that's actually 30% bigger than the current casino at Rivers, the current Rivers and Displayns. And we've master-planned this property to allow for maximum flexibility. We agree that a temporary casino doesn't make any sense, but we're open to the possibility of building one. But if we don't build one, I think that our proposal is the only one that's committed to making payments to the city of Waughkegan and the other communities equal to the estimated lost tax revenue during construction of our permanent casino. We estimate that the payments to the communities will be $6 million a year. And like all of our developments, we'll build this project with union labor. In addition to a full complement of food and beverage venues, our project will also include a state-of-the-art sports book. Our company has opened the first sports book in the state of New York, and we're currently the leading retail sports book operator in both Pennsylvania and New York, and we're very excited for sports betting in Illinois. Our interactive company, Rush Interactive, was named Mobile Operator of the Year at the 2019 EGR North American Awards. As most of you know, casinos drive significant economic development in their surrounding area by creating quality jobs and contracting with local businesses. We will give priority to local and minority vendors, implementing similar programs that we have in place in our other host cities. We have a proven track record of partnering with local minority and women-owned businesses, and we will certainly continue that practice in Waughkegan. Rivers Casino Waughkegan will create 1,200 quality jobs in Waughkegan with great benefits and upward mobility. We'll also have a local hiring preference, and we will partner with Lake County College, as well as other workforce development programs to recruit locally. And we've done that in all our properties, and it's been very successful. Another thing I'm proud of, all our properties have been voted a best place to work. In fact, the Chicago Tribune has named Rivers Casino in Displayns a best place to work in six of the seven years they've been eligible. Very proud of that. In Displayns, actually, about 60% of our team members are minorities, and about one-third of our executive team are minorities. Rivers Casino is also the only casino in Illinois to have achieved a 16% minority ownership. We're proud of the fact that 52 minority investors were able to become owners of Rivers Casino Displayns, which was a highly-successful investment, and in many cases, a life-changing event for some of the minority owners. We are committed to doing the same thing in Waughkegan. We have a long history of strong community partnerships. We've pledged 2% of our pre-tax income to go to local nonprofit organizations to be selected by the city of Waughkegan. We estimate that this will generate about $400,000 to $800,000 a year, and if the city of Waughkegan would like to allocate that to the school system, they will have the option to do that. Next, I'm going to turn it over to our partner, Bill Carstangen, the CEO of Churchill Downs.
We have two goals today. Explain who we are and demonstrate why we believe strongly that we are the best partner for Waughkegan. First, we've discussed we will generate the highest revenue for the community. Our database, our brand, our ten years of experience in the marketplace and in this region. Two, we also give Waughkegan the most certainty this project will get done. We've shown you the projects we've done in the past and the impact those have had on the community. Also, our balance sheet and our access to capital is second to none in the gaming space. Track record. You've seen as much as we can show you in fifteen minutes. There are no other regional gaming companies in the United States that can match what this group has done over the last ten years. Reputation for integrity. This is the only team that is already fully licensed to operate a casino in Illinois. There's no risk to Waughkegan with this team. In fact, Rush Street and Churchill Downs are licensed all over the United States with unblemished records. We have a short video demonstrating who we are as a team and as companies, and what we think we can do for Waughkegan. This team will deliver for you.
Rivers Casino Waughkegan will continue the Rivers brand tradition of collaborating with the host.
Maybe at the end, we're going to do going-to-alderman time now. But you might have time. One of my questions was about the fact that you were willing to cannibalize your own customers, but you kind of answered that in your presentation. One of the things you mentioned in your proposal a couple of times was competition is stiff. And as I mentioned to the last presenter, casino revenue overall in Illinois has gone down, except for you guys, which is commendable. But I'm wondering how you address the issue that we're going to have six new casinos, and I don't know that we've ever done that before. And with the revenues going down, how do you project that you'll be able to make this successful?
First, let me point out that the revenues of Rivers Displayns have grown, not gone down, while the state has been struggling, okay? That's because of our team and the quality of our product and our track record. Secondly, the market is going to get more competitive, there's no doubt about it, okay? But we, when you mentioned cannibalizing, any casino in Waughkegan will take business away from further south, okay? But as I pointed out before, okay, the taxes that would be paid by our group, okay, are lower in Waughkegan than they are in Displayns. So we're not going to fight moving customers to Waughkegan because it's not in our economic interest to do so. That is a critical factor, the exact opposite of the Potawatomi.
One other question I have, I asked the last group too about union workers. I'd also like to ask you about that and if you have any policies for hiring people with disabilities.
So as it relates to union workers, our company policy is really to let our team members decide. And in our property in New York, they have decided to organize, and all of our other properties have not decided to organize. And as far as team members with disabilities, we absolutely do have programs in place to recruit those types of folks, and we have a successful program here in Displayns.
Thank you, Alderman Felix Rivera from the Seventh Ward. And you didn't touch upon this, but I'd like to find out if, and you probably have, and just a little bit more explanation of any type of a protocol or a process to identify addicted gamblers and to bar them from your facilities?
Sure. So we take problem gaming very seriously at all our properties, and we work closely with the IGB on their self-exclusion program. We have materials posted throughout the casino, at the ATMs, at our cashier. We also have a bounty program in place in Displayns, and the way that works is any team member on property who can actually identifies somebody who's on the self-excluded list will get a $500 bounty. And I think we pay out about $30,000 a year to team members for finding self-excluded folks on the casino floor.
Edith Newsome, Alderman of the Fifth Ward. I know you talked about 1,200 local jobs, and Waughkegan will have priority. Can you talk about what type of jobs those would be? Who would be your team leaders? Would you be training, not just for restaurants, but would they be doing dealers? Are you training them for upper-scale jobs, not just, you know, restaurant workers or anything like that?
Well, so, you know, one of the things I love about the casino industry is the upward mobility. If you look at our general managers across our properties, many of them started as, you know, one was an entry-level accountant, another one was a dealer. So, you know, there really is an opportunity to advance in the casino industry. And the jobs that we're talking about are really quality jobs with great benefits, and we have a great 401K program. And we do do training, so each of our properties is a little bit different, but we have dealer schools. And, you know, we can either work with a community college like Lake County College, or we can, we have it in-house, and we train folks for those jobs. Dealer jobs are great jobs, actually. I think in Displayns, an average dealer makes about almost $60,000 a year with benefits and tips. And then there's restaurant jobs, and there's cashiers, there's, I mean, there really, casino has so many different types of job classification. There's security officers, there's surveillance, there's valet parkers, so a lot of different jobs in a casino. Right, so what we've done in our other properties is we really go look for local workforce development groups and try to work with them to bring in qualified candidates. And, you know, I think in Philadelphia, for example, we targeted 25% for local employment. I think Waughkegan's a lot smaller than Philly, obviously, so we'd probably expand that to include other local communities. But we would, you know, try to target a percentage. I can't remember what the numbers in Displayns, but we're very happy with the numbers that we've hit locally, local employees.
Two things, just like I asked Potawatomi. Would there ever be a tipping point where you guys might consider a hotel? And do any of your other properties currently have hotels on them?
No, that's a great question. So our newest property in Schenectady, New York, we actually opened with a hotel, about 154 rooms or so. Pittsburgh, which is actually now 10 years old, we're just starting construction on a hotel actually this month, and Displayns were thinking possibly about a hotel. When we looked at the Waughkegan market, you know, there's two hotels that are really close by, and their occupancy is in the high 60s. And, you know, our preference in the beginning would be to work with those hotels, try to, you know, we, in other jurisdictions in Displayns and Philly, we actually send folks, our customers, to local hotels, and we would do the same thing here. And if we did get to a point where we thought building a hotel made economic sense, we absolutely would do that.
Again, my name is Keith Turner, I'm the Alderman in the Sixth Ward. And as I've asked the other presenters, I'm curious to know what your proposed offer is for the land that you'd be purchasing from the city and what that payment would look like, what the structure would be.
We've offered $11 million. We've said we'll sit down and negotiate that. And we've also made it clear that if you prefer, we can pay it over a period of time or have a different kind of a structure. But if you want the cash, as soon as we get our license, we'll give you the cash. And the money's in the bank. Don't forget that we're also going to pay... Don't forget that we're also gonna pay, if we don't do a, I think this is very important, if we don't do an interim casino, we're gonna be paying after six months from the date we get the license, about $6 million a year in lieu of what you would be receiving from an interim casino if we determine that doesn't make sense. And it may not for all the reasons that the gentleman from, I believe it was Potawatomi, you had discussed.
Alderman Bolton, Rodal?
Alderman Rudell Kirkwood of the 4th Ward. The question I have for you, I know that you say potential hotels. What would it take for you to include that in your proposal, a hotel? And then also, in terms of our senior citizens, what type of employment opportunities are there for those senior citizens in the Waukegan area?
So we haven't actually thought about an actual program for senior citizens, but I can tell you this, that we've got lots of senior citizens employed at all our properties and they're great employees and, you know, we, so we definitely will, we can think about something like that. I think that makes a lot of sense. As far as, I understand your question is, would we build a hotel at the start of day one? That's not currently in our plan. And we did that in New York, but we haven't done that at our other properties. As I mentioned, we're starting construction in Pittsburgh. And, you know, basically, we want to prove out the market and we don't wanna, we don't wanna, there's two existing hotels that are very close by and we don't, we think building a hotel out of the box may negatively impact those local businesses. And so, you know, our plan is to wait and see. But if it does make sense, we will start building one, you know, soon after we're open.
We have about five more minutes left. Is, are there any other questions? Go right ahead, Greg.
I just wanted to make sure I heard you right. If you do not build a temporary casino, you would still pay us what you might think the temporary casino would generate? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Just to be clear, six months after we get the license.
Rivers Casino Waukegan.
We will pay, we will pay $6 million a year monthly, divided by each month, until we open the permit.
Okay. I think you have time for your short video.
Rivers Casino Waukegan will continue the Rivers brand tradition of collaborating with the host community to improve quality of life for all residents. We call this initiative Rivers Gives. Rush Street Gaming and Churchill Downs together have more than a century of giving back to the communities in which they operate. Their shared vision and values have transformed neighborhoods and cities across the country. No two communities are alike, so our Rivers Gives programs are customized for each market. In Pittsburgh, the Rivers Casino community champions donate more than 2,000 staff hours annually to paint shelters, clean up riverbanks, and more. In Louisville, Norton Children's Hospital named Churchill Downs their corporate Partner of the Year for their efforts to bring employees and the racing community to visit and inspire their young patients. Rivers Casino Des Plaines declared its commitment to education at ribbon-cutting and has since generated millions of dollars for Chicagoland schools, as well as Autism Speaks and other local charities. Through their partnership with Fund for the Arts and the Jennifer Lawrence Arts Fund, Churchill Downs has committed to providing critical support to local artists to ensure that their cities remain a vibrant place to live, work, and visit. In upstate New York, Rivers Casino and Resorts Schenectady hosts an Alzheimer's Walk as part of its annual giving program. Churchill Downs utilizes one of its largest platforms, Kentucky Oaks, to promote women's health and encourages fans to join the charitable effort. Each year, they donate over $100,000 to make mammograms free and accessible to the underserved in the community. In Philadelphia, Rush Street's Sugar House Casino helped establish the Penn Treaty Special Services District to receive and distribute grants funded by the casino to neighborhood groups in need. Supporting the causes that our communities care about is one very important way that Rush Street and Churchill Downs give back, but there are many more. Partnering with local entrepreneurs and inviting their businesses to become part of the casino is another. In Schenectady, a local restaurateur was able to grow its business with a new gaming floor bakery called Villa Italia. Another local company, Beekman 1802, provides all our soap for our hotel guest rooms. In Chicago, the famed Gibson's Restaurant Group opened Hugo's Frog Bar and Chop House at Rivers Casino Des Plaines, and soon thereafter expanded with another Hugo's location at Sugar House in Philly. In Pittsburgh, where Rivers Casino has just broken ground for a new hotel, we've already hosted vendor recruitment events for local minority and women-owned businesses to connect with subcontracting opportunities. We not only spend local, but we hire local too. Typically, 90% or more of our team members are from the area. So Rivers Casino Waukegan not only supports the community, we are the community. Let's grow together.
Yeah, one minute if you'd like to.
You got a question?
Come on over.
In terms of funds for the school district, are you willing to give additional funds to the school district outside of what the city gets? Are you willing to do that, to set up something for Waukegan Public Schools, District 60, to give them additional funds for our students?
Right. So what we did in Des Plaines was we contribute 2% of our pre-tax income, so outside of the tax revenue that's generated, to education causes. And we've actually made that same commitment in Waukegan. And the plan was to have the Waukegan City Council actually allocate those funds. So if the city council would like to take that money, we estimate it's about $400,000 to $800,000 a year. If they want to take those funds and give it to the school district, they can do that.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much. We have North Point coming up.
Good afternoon. Thank you. We still have the, uh, the, uh...
All right. Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us to present our project. And, you know, I think we'll describe to you why we believe that North Point is the best project for Waukegan. First of all, I'll introduce the team. My name's Bill Warner with Warner Gaming. I've got Jeff Parr, Michael Bond, and Prashant Gupta on the stage with me. We'll talk about each of us as we go. But as with some of the other groups, we've received gaming licenses in, you know, states all across North America, as well as in Canada. So from a licensing standpoint, I think we have a very strong background of gaming integrity. My company manages six casinos throughout the West and Midwest U.S. And I have been in the gaming industry for 25-plus years, all in local regional gaming. And, you know, I think the other thing that's really important is the development experience. I personally have been involved with 12 properties being built from the ground up and understand how to plan a property to be built properly for a market and how to grow within that Prashant, as I indicated, is up here with us. Prashant represents our minority investment. He's speaking to 25% of the equity investment for the project. And I think it's also important to note that 20% of that 25% is female investment. Michael is onstage as well. Michael obviously lives, works in the local community and has done a great job tying in local businesses and local enterprises to be supportive of the project and to be integrated with the project as we develop.
I am Jeff Parr from Clearvest. We are the leading investor in gaming in North America for the last 20 years. We've made investments in over 33 gaming assets across four continents, and we have over $1 billion available to backstop this project. We have highly confident letters from banks who have lent us money in the past, not letters from agents who say they think they can raise the money. In 2009, when markets were closed, as others have said, we stepped in and assisted Rush Street finance their project with a great partnership, which we're very proud of with them. And in July, we acquired a company that is active in the sports betting business, and we are investors in the Meadowlands Racetrack in New Jersey, which is the highest grossing sports betting facility in the country. Thank you.
So on to the project. Project's planned in three phases. And it's planned that way to obviously take advantage of what we believe to be a very strong market here, but build a first phase in a way that's prudent and planned easily to expand without disruption. So as you look on the left-hand side of this page, that's the first phase. The middle phase, or the second phase is in the middle. And then on the far right is kind of a long-term master plan. The project is designed to be an entertainment destination. And, you know, having been in local regional gaming for a long time, I understand clearly that just a casino doesn't work, not to maximize revenues anyhow. What you really need is a destination that will attract people, obviously, for gaming, but also you want something that people feel comfortable coming to that aren't coming just to the casino. So we use entertainment as a big driver in business. We obviously recognize food and beverage as critical. We have restaurants that cater to multiple meal periods, whether it's a quick-serve food hall visit to get you a meal and then off to a show out in the amphitheater, or whether it's a fine dining restaurant in the concept that Austin's would bring to the property. We have a two-acre amphitheater. And I think that's, and I'll touch on it a little bit later as well, but I think it's important to understand that even though we were proposing this two-acre amphitheater, it's not gonna be competitive with this fine venue. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about that in a little bit as I talk about my experience with Sioux City, Iowa. Parking, we've got a parking garage as well as surface parking, multiple access points to the property to create convenience for guests. Parking is gold to a local customer. You gotta be able to get into a property conveniently, park, and get access to the casino, restaurants, or entertainment. And then in the second phase, I know it's been talked about by a couple people, but, you know, 200-room, Four Diamond Hotel, so differentiating the hotel product from the existing hotel product, I think is important. A conference center, spa salon. And then the third phase again is a retail district. Jobs, 1,000 construction jobs will be created through the construction of this project. And then, sorry? And then 1,180 permanent jobs, both at the property and throughout the community, will be created. So why North Point? You know, we think one of the things that really differentiates us is we're focused on creating a local community development here. We are local. And what does it mean to be local? You know, it really means getting involved with community businesses and ensuring they have an opportunity to participate in the success of this property, whether it's food and beverage, Quonset Pizza, La Canoa, Austin's, Big Ed's Barbecue. We've had discussions with each one of those and have effectively a partnership to bring them into the property. We've also worked with the Black Chamber of Commerce for a workforce development program. There's gonna be training that's gonna be needed for all sorts of... Thank you. There's gonna be training that's gonna be needed for all sorts of aspects of the business, but we also want to provide people who don't have direct experience the opportunity to get a job at this property, get trained prior to coming in, and, you know, succeed with the property. Got IDI, Stacy Bullard, involved in the construction. And we are the only group that has been endorsed by the local trade unions for construction. Our plan for Waukegan first is a commitment to local businesses. In Sioux City, Iowa, when I built that project, the Hard Rock Hotel and Casino Sioux City, and, you know, through construction and through operations, 95% of our purchases of goods and services has been local through Iowa businesses. Our commitment is Waukegan first, Lake County second, and Illinois third. And our intent is to do business with people in this community. Got a short video for you here.
Waukegan, we're putting you first. Why? Because we're local. And we understand the value of keeping it in our hometown. To put Waukegan first, we're investing in the community. It's vibrancy. It's future. To put Waukegan first, we're making a commitment. To partner with minority-owned vendors. To utilize local businesses. And to support local philanthropic causes. To put Waukegan first, we must seize the moment by choosing the team that's local, experienced, and ready.
You're gonna have a lot more businesses, a lot more companies that are looking to move into this area.
So hopefully, it'll just give the town a nice little boost that it needs.
With the casino coming in, it's gonna give us something else, something different that we haven't seen.
I think Waukegan could definitely use some more live entertainment.
Definitely think North Point Casino could be a future starting zone for economic growth here in Waukegan.
I think it'd be a great addition to Waukegan. And I'm really happy knowing that everything is gonna stay local as well.
That's what I'm excited about too, because it's an opportunity for me as a small business owner here in Waukegan to be able to grow.
Waukegan deserves the benefits. Waukegan deserves the tax revenues. Choose a local developer.
My name is Arthur Gass, and I support bringing North Point Casino into Waukegan.
My name's Jeremiah Johnson with Quonset Pizza, and I support bringing North Point Casino into Waukegan.
My name is Stacy Bullard, and I am in support of bringing North Point Casino to Waukegan.
So being locally focused not only means partnering with local businesses and organizations, but it really means trying to get the best for the city and fight for every dollar that the city should get the benefit of in a gaming enterprise. This map shows your competition effectively. Des Plaines to the south, Potawatomi to the north. 30-mile radius, locals, locals gaming, convenience wins. We're gonna get the revenues from that 30-mile radius, you know, by virtue of convenience. But we need to maximize the revenues we get out of that 30-mile radius and actually reach into those competitive zones, which you see in the shaded areas where we overlap with the competitors. The only way you can ensure that you're gonna get the most revenues for Waukegan is to get somebody who independently is fighting for you 100%. I worked for a local gaming company, and we had multiple properties in one market. We divided up the customers, and one property couldn't market to the other property's customers. That doesn't maximize revenues. So partnership with the community is critical. And in Sioux City, I just wanna run by a video here real quick. I know I'm getting a little slow on time based on what I've got to talk about. But we partnered with the community, and they had a venue similar to this, designed by the same architect. We opened up an outdoor amphitheater, and our purpose was to complement what they had and to work with them, and we jointly booked both venues. And it works fantastic for the city. They also have an indoor 9,000-seat venue that we work together cooperatively with. And here's some testimonial from the city leaders.
I think Warner Gaming's played an integral part in the building of this area, Sioux City specifically. I've seen a lot of great development in this area, and it's kind of revitalized this part of town, which I think has been needed. And really, this property has been the catalyst for that growth, and I couldn't thank them enough for that. You know, one of the big promises that they made was not only to have a property that was focused on gaming and gambling, but also a property that people that didn't partake in that would enjoy. And so we're talking about dining options, entertainment options, or shows. And that's something that was really important to me, is that balance. Warner Gaming delivered.
Warner Gaming has created an environment in this... of town, which I think has been needed, and really, this property has been the catalyst for that growth, and I couldn't thank them enough for that. You know, one of the big promises that they made was not only to have a property that was focused on gaming and gambling, but also a property that people that didn't partake in that would enjoy. And so we're talking about dining options, entertainment options, or shows, and that's something that was really important to me, is that balance. Warner Gaming delivered.
Warner Gaming has created an environment in this county that's above anything I've ever seen. All of the specs that were presented in the preliminary rounds were met or exceeded. In my viewpoint, Warner Gaming delivered 150%. It's been exciting to be involved.
It's hard for me to imagine any project, any big event going on in our community that their name isn't associated with, so it's great to have a community-minded partner that really understands that it's not just about their corporate success, but the success of our whole community, and they get it. Yet Warner has delivered, and they continue to deliver in our community, and we're excited that they're part of our community.
So now, what does that mean for Waukegan? And this is, I think, really important here, because, you know, when it comes down to all the proposals, everybody's making revenue estimates. The bottom line is, hope doesn't generate revenues, slot machines don't generate revenues, the people in the market generate revenues for the casino. And what we're going to do for the city is guarantee $50 million as compensation for, one, the land, $22 million for the land, and then $28 million for a charitable foundation, similar to what we did in Sioux City, Iowa. And that foundation will be guided by the people of Waukegan, not by us. So we're not going to guide it, we're going to contribute to it. The leaders of the city and the community will decide what happens to that money. In addition to partner with the community, we're offering 2% of revenues above 130 million and 3% above 200 million, because again, our estimates may be low. We're built, ready to expand, and we're hopeful that that partnership yields a benefit. So the bottom bar here is all applicants. You're going to get your share of wagering taxes, you're going to get your share of gaming taxes, you're going to get property taxes and sales taxes from all applicants. But, as I said, $22 million for the land purchase, as well as $28 million guaranteed for a charitable foundation. And then on top of that is that revenue share, and depending on the range of revenues, you know, the city can benefit from $275 million to $750 million over 50 years. It's a significant incentive for us to participate with the city, a significant benefit for the city for selecting us. But again, I think you've got to look at just the difference based on a market estimate. You can't look at everybody's guesses at revenues, because, you know, again, it's a guess, and I think you've got to focus on what we think the market can be and make sure that there's a mechanism to grow within that market. So, you know, how do we score? I think we're the most experienced from ground-up development, fully capitalized and funded, licensed or pending licensing in Illinois, 25% minority investment, 20% of which is female.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman.
Hello. So it's only fair I ask you the same question I asked Mr. Hackberg. I know he's your partner, Michael. I'm curious why you both presented a proposal to Waukegan when you were partners.
This development is completely independent of our interests in taproom. And it's not coordinated in any way. We decided to go in different directions.
So there's been a divorce. I'm curious also why you've encouraged people to, and you even put it in your proposal, that you should be the only applicant we send to the state when we're required by law, I believe, to submit multiple proposals.
I believe that it's within the power of the city to decide how many proposals they send. And importantly, if you send more than two or three, it will require the IGB to make choices that they think will determine the most revenue to the state, not to Waukegan.
Well, aren't those connected, though? Because they get...
No, they are not, because a proposal from a competitive casino may result in less revenue. Sorry, the taxes paid, so the table tax rate, which Mr. Bloom didn't mention, is very different now with, under the new law, and so that you may result, and your consultant should assist you in making this analysis, that you may result in, if you have a competitive casino managing this facility, it may result in lower revenue to the state, and so they will pick someone who will not maximize the revenue for Waukegan. The only group that will maximize the revenue for Waukegan is the only group that's focused solely on Waukegan.
Can I have you go back a slide or two? That one, right there. So, over, that's an estimate over 50 years, correct?
That's correct.
So what are your numbers for that? Like, Waukegan is 275 million to 750 million. What profit will you realize off of that chart?
Well, first of all, just so you know how the chart is constructed, so the left-hand number, the 275, is based on a market revenue of 100 million, which we think is going to be more than that, and the right side is 250 million of...
Per year?
Per year of gaming revenues. Correct.
Okay, so can you total that up for me? I can't do that math, and my calculator won't do it. So what's 275 million, I'm sorry, 100 million, over 50 years would be?
Five billion, yeah.
Five billion dollars.
Right.
And you, and I believe in your proposal, you said only 45% of your customers will come from outside the immediate area. Is that right? So 55% of the dollars you're talking about are going to come from our area?
Yeah, well, the 30-mile ring is going to be, the 30-mile radius is going to be 80 to 90% of the revenues. But yeah, as far as you look at the community, I think those numbers are correct.
So just to repeat that, 55% of that money is going to come out of Waukegan?
Yeah, it's, bottom line is, every proponent is going to have the same dynamic, and what we did is we wanted to make sure Waukegan participated with the growth in revenues. So to the extent that there's more revenues, we want Waukegan to benefit for it. And the key, I think, too, is $5 billion is not going in the bank, that's revenues. Those revenues are used then for payroll, for marketing, for gaming taxes, for payments to the city, for a number of other things. So that $5 billion is not profit, that's revenues.
Okay. This revenue that you're talking about, does that include all three phases?
So the revenue that we had projected is, from a slot and table game standpoint, is $120 million. I think some of the other proponents put the number up there. That's what we're anticipating from Phase One. We have set this up and we're, we have committed to buying the licenses for the entire 2,000 gaming positions. My belief, and the 120 million came from a Spectrum study, so a third-party study. My belief is there's more market out there than what Spectrum put out there, but we wanted to represent our numbers based on the third party. So we've designed this property to be able to expand quickly from a gaming perspective, and we're buying the licenses upfront, because we're bullish and thinking that we're going to be able to expand it. So the Phase One is the 120 million.
Okay. Initially, when the proposal was made, Mr. Bonner, it was, you were going to buy the 10 acres next to this casino property to put your taproom gaming headquarters there. Are there still plans to do that? Because that was your thing, was that was going to provide jobs, you were going to train them, and then they would be right there by the casino. Is that still part of the plan or not?
This proposal does not include anything related to taproom gaming.
Okay, but would you still consider another property to do that? Because there, in a sense, it's still connected to the casino, and it was, that was part of the incentive for doing the jobs.
Well, if I could just jump in real here, real quick, we are proposing a temporary facility, and I think one of the most important things about a temporary facility is, one, it allows Waukegan to generate revenues soon. More than just replacing the revenues you would have lost, it creates jobs, and it allows for people to get trained up for the full-time facility once it gets open. So we want to get people working sooner, and that's where the temporary facility comes in, and we're very accustomed to training people up for the temporary facility, for any positions, but we believe the temporary is important for exactly that reason.
And where are you thinking of putting the temporary?
We're looking at different locations, but worst case, we would do it on-site. We've got plenty of land. We would build a building on the right half, if you remember, the right half of that, the master plan where the latest piece comes in, so where Phase Three would effectively come in. But if we can find a location with a suitable building that's close to the property, we would do that.
I have a question regarding your phase, your second phase and your third phase.
Sure.
I know your second phase calls for 200 hotel rooms.
Right.
Maybe 20 suites, spa, fitness center, and then your third phase calls for a conference center, ballroom, and maybe breakout meeting spaces. Being that the city of Waukegan could utilize the third phase more than the second phase since we have hotel rooms out there already, would that be able to be switched?
It's designed from a master planning standpoint to add any component in an efficient way, so absolutely it could be switched. It really comes down to demand. You know, when we, for example, in Sioux City, Iowa, we opened up the Hard Rock Sioux City five years ago. We're on our second expansion already, and it really comes down to what's the demand in the market, and if the demand for conference space materializes in the market, we're all in on doing that, but we have to see what the market would dictate. You know, hotel, we built a 54-room hotel in Sioux City, and the occupancy in that town at the time we built was 55%. So we built a small hotel, because we felt like we needed to do that to be competitive. But now, because of what's happened with Sioux City and because we've really created an entertainment destination, Sioux City's become kind of a regional hub for entertainment with our venues as well as the city venues. They're under construction on three hotels right now in downtown, on top of the other hotels becoming healthy. So we just want to make sure that the market can sustain whatever's built, and we plan for the ability to expand as the market shows up.
Is Sioux City somewhat similar to this, or not really?
So Sioux City is 840 slot machines, 24 table games. It's probably 80% of this. It's an outdoor amphitheater, which in 2018 was named the best outdoor entertainment venue in the casino industry. It's got an 800-seat indoor entertainment venue, and again, that was set up to complement the city. The city had Orpheum Theater there, Genesee here, but they had the Orpheum Theater there and the Tyson Event Center. So we built two venues that didn't compete, but actually turned into the fact now the city has four great entertainment venues, and it sparked a lot of investment in the downtown and has grown the market.
My question was going to be, is there any way you could break out what the non-gaming revenue from Sioux City has generated compared to gaming? I know that's, you bring your actuary with you, but that's all right, but that, you know, what the, by maximize, trying to maximize the development, other than gaming with other stuff, can you, is there any way? Because that's why I asked about the Sioux City question, is there a comparable, or is that, I, that's sort of putting you guys on the spot, but I get it about maximizing it, but is, what's the other revenue generated besides gaming, I guess, is my question?
Right, right, and it becomes a little distorted, because slots do generate a lot of revenues, but I think our mix is 80/20, where non-gaming is 20%. But again, I just go back to what the non-gaming amenities really bring to the property. I mean, we've had, in Sioux City, Iowa, we've had, we sold tickets for entertainment to somebody from every one of the 50 states, six provinces of Canada, and countries, you know, overseas, Sioux City, Iowa. I've been booking entertainment for a long time, and I'm a big believer in entertainment being a differentiator. I ran the Hard Rock in Las Vegas for seven years, and that has really kind of helped our team gain the expertise to drive a different outcome here.
My question is regarding the school district, once again. I know on one of your slides, there would be dollars allocated for, possibly for the school district. I want to make sure that those dollars are earmarked for the school district, that does not impact what the city gets from the revenue generating from the games or whatever else happens for the city. Is that a true statement?
Well, it's set up in different pieces. So we have $22 million for the land, that goes to the city. The $28 million would be at your discretion, if you felt like education was the right decision, it would go for education. We didn't want to put ourselves in the middle of saying it must go for education. We wanted to give the city leaders the opportunity to decide where that money went, as well as the 2% to 3% of revenues above the different levels that would go into the same pot that the city could then figure out how to allocate it out.
Addressing, once again, behavioral health concerns, what standards or precautions are you going to have in place?
Yeah, and we focus on this on every property we operate in. You know, at the end of the day, it comes down to how do you identify somebody who's got an issue and then get them into a training program that allows them to help themselves? And the best way you can possibly do that, clearly you have communication in the restrooms, communication at the ATM machines, all of that is standard, but it's the training of the team members to identify the issue and to assist that guest in finding a solution. And we also partner with local groups. You know, Sioux City, there's a local problem gambling group that we bring into the property. They set up a table, they talk to guests, and we encourage that.
I'm sorry, excuse me, I just pointed clarity, I'm not sure I caught it, but was it 22 million that you were offering for the land?
It is.
And what was it, the 28 million?
That goes into that foundation that would be controlled by the city leaders to determine what causes or opportunities that they wanted to allocate those dollars to.
Okay, thank you.
Will there be any other restaurants besides the ones that have been listed there? Will it strictly be only local people, or will we be bringing other people on board as well?
Well, so one of the restaurants would be operated by the property, and the reason for that is dining is a big incentive for people to visit, and we want to have one venue that we can use to promote the gaming floor, so we would offer, you know, some discount meals or loyalty-based meals, and we want to make sure that we're not pressuring a local business to do that. We want to take that burden on ourselves to drive slot business when business isn't at its peak. So...
So that's not the Austin Steakhouse, then? That's somewhere, that's something else?
It's the Lakeshore Cafe, right.
Okay.
Pat Seeger, Second Ward, Alderman, City of Waukegan. So you're saying that you will work with our, right now, our local businesses, is that correct?
That's correct.
United we stand, right?
Look, at the end of the day, if the local community embraces this property, we all succeed, and I'm 100% committed to incorporating local business into this project.
Thank you very much, sir.
You've got about 30 seconds if you want to wrap it up.
Well, again, I think the differentiator here for us, well, two differentiators for us, I think one is this local focus and our commitment to the community, and, you know, the mayor of Sioux City getting on here and being willing to be videoed to tell what we've done in Sioux City, I think is pretty rare. We've taken a relationship with that town very, very seriously, and we would do the same here. The other is, we would fight for Waukegan alone.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, North Point. Full house is the final before our consultant.
Full House is the final before our consultant.
Hello, everybody. I'm glad they saved the best for last. We're, uh, with Full House Resorts headquartered in Las Vegas. We're a public company traded on the NASDAQ exchange. Um, actually, I was trying to tally it up. I think, uh, as a group, our management team has developed more casinos than all of the other four groups combined. And we've consistently reinvested in our properties, so. Full House itself is a relatively small company. We have, um, five casinos. The Sober Slipper, which is in Mississippi near New Orleans. Uh, we operate the casino at the Hyatt at Lake Tahoe. Um, we have the Rising Star Casino in Indiana, which is near Cincinnati. We have Bronco Billy's Casino in Colorado, which is near Colorado Springs. And we have a casino in a small town called Fallon, Nevada, which is where the Navy Top Gun School is. But more importantly, uh, before joining Full House, our management team was involved in a number of places. I was the chairman and CEO of a company called Pinnacle Entertainment. And in that, we built La Berge de Lac in southwest Louisiana, a place called Lake Charles. It's the closest casino to Houston. Uh, it cost four hundred and thirty million dollars when it was built ten years ago. And it makes about a hundred and fifteen million dollars a year and turned around the entire city of Lake Charles, Louisiana, which was kind of a chemical dump before we built that. Uh, and today is a very prosperous community. Uh, then, uh, in a separate company, developed a second casino there, which today is called the, the Golden Nugget. Uh, also at Pinnacle, we built Lemire Place, which is the Four Seasons Hotel and Casino in downtown, uh, St. Louis. And River City, which is on the south side of St. Louis. Uh, but back in the nineteen nineties, I was the, uh, Senior Vice President of Development and the Chief Financial Officer of, I'm going to give up on this thing. Uh, of Mirage Resorts, which is a Las Vegas company. And there we developed Treasure Island. Now, that was four hundred and seventy million dollars twenty-five years ago. So it's about a billion dollars today. That's the one on the upper left. It's much bigger than it looks, by the way. Each of those windows is really four rooms. You took half of the wall as you walked in, it's glass from floor to ceiling and the mirror images put together. Uh, because, uh, it has a pirate, uh, show at the front and a pirate village. Uh, the show doesn't run anymore. The current owner stopped it, but, but when it opened and had a very successful pirate show. And whoever saw a three thousand room hotel on top of a pirate village. So we tried to make the hotel look small. Um, and then Bellagio, uh, which most of you have probably heard of. Uh, it's been open twenty years now. It was a billion six when we built it. Uh, if you built it today, it'd probably be four billion or something. Uh, and a very, very successful hotel, uh, five-star hotel. Uh, and the fountains at Bellagio, which are quite famous, are the second most Instagrammed thing on the planet after the Eiffel Tower. Um, and, uh, and so, and there's a few others, but the, these are the notable ones, um, that we've developed. Um, one of the key things about them, if you go to the next one, this is probably the most important slide you're going to see today. And it's a very simple slide. And what is the propensity of people to gamble? It is a classic bell curve. On one end, you have people who are religious or maybe they have a PhD in math. They never gamble. They don't find it interesting. And it's some portion of society, ten or twenty percent. And at the other end, there is the avid gamblers. And some would even say the addicted gamblers. These are the people who have a problem. That's the most profitable segment in the business. They will line up in a parking garage to play a slot machine. And when Chicago and, and Illinois legalized eleven casinos, only eleven, and limited them in size, that's when people went after. They built airplane hangars with slot machines in them and a couple of restaurants. That's what all the casinos are in Illinois. You know it, you've seen them. Some of them float, some of them don't float. But basically, they're very simple structures and they're very, very profitable. This is changing, however. Um, by the way, the casino revenues in the state have actually been growing of the casinos themselves as a group. It's down in part because of rivers, some of them have, that's taken some market share. But all the VLTs have taken market share. So the total gaming revenues in the state have grown, but that of the casinos has not. Um, but as you now add even more casinos and even more VLTs and slots at racetracks and so on, you have to start getting into the middle area, which is where people will gamble if it's part of something else. And we're headquartered in Las Vegas. I've lived in Las Vegas twenty-five years. I've helped develop a lot of Las Vegas. And it's pretty interesting. You go up to a crap table and somebody's rolling the dice. And you'll say, are you a gambler? Hell, no, I'm here for a bachelor party. I'm here for a convention. I'm here because I'm driving to California and I stopped on the way. But he's gambling. And that's most of us. We, we go out to dinner and maybe we gamble while we're, before we're, while we're waiting for a table or something. Most people will do it with some other entertainment. And so we looked at this and said, Illinois is changing. They're going to need casinos that have more than just gaming, that are, have entertainment, have well-rounded experiences. The other thing they did that nobody else mentioned, they dropped the tax rate on table games to sixteen percent. On slot machines, it gets up to twenty, thirty, forty percent, sixteen percent. We looked at it and said, that's a game changer. Uh, all of a sudden, you can make really good money on table games. And the existing combination is not set up for it. So we went and designed a place called American Place that is designed to get that high-end table game player and good slot machine business and draw people from throughout Chicagoland and Milwaukee, not just the thirty-mile radius. Let's make this a tourist destination for the region. So this isn't, we all have the same number of slot machines roughly and so on. But we've designed this to be a major tourist attraction. So like those fountains at Bellagio. You know the most interesting place to see the fountains? It's from the workman's boat out in the middle of the lake. You've got to put it in the right spot. But then it's really exciting because you've got water flying all over the place. Well, that's done by Wet Design out of, out of Burbank, California. And so we've been talking to them about putting a fountain at the front that looks like a normal fountain. But then every now and then it comes alive and there's water flying over your head. You don't get wet, but it's all around you as part of a show. It's probably a ten-million-dollar fountain. And the idea is to build something that people drive up from Chicago to see. This is the whole thing. The, uh, you can see the fountains in the front. It's got a moving roof so we can close it up in the winter and a front wall that closes up on the front. Uh, we have restrooms that look out at the fountain and a bar that looks out at the fountain. At the back, we have a thing, um, it is a, similar to the mansion at MGM. Most people have never, never even heard of the mansion. The mansion is one of the nicest hotels in the world, maybe the nicest hotel in the world. Um, and this is a picture of the inside, and that's inside. It looks like it's outside. Um, and so similar to that, we have twenty rooms. Not quite the quality of the mansion because they're going after that Japanese high-roller or Chinese high-roller, might lose millions of dollars a weekend. We're looking for the high-roller out of Chicago, might lose twenty thousand dollars in a weekend. Nevertheless, it's, it, it's a two-thousand-square-foot room. In other words, your, your suite is the size of a house. Your average hotel room is only three or four hundred rooms. We did not, in our first phase, have a regular hotel because as other people have noticed, there's nice hotels in the area that we can use. But there's no hotel in Chicago like what we're proposing to build. Only twenty rooms, but very special twenty rooms with butler service and massage rooms and, and all sorts of special amenities. And, and frankly, we have a helicopter pad. There's a hundred heliports in Chicagoland, plus about twenty airports. And we used to do this in Lake Charles. We had a sea plane that was outfitted like a limo. And it would pick gamblers up in Texas and it would fly in and land on the Calcasieu River next to our suites and pull up to the dock. If we had a little guy standing there saying, the plane, the plane, it would be right out of the movies, right? And it was very popular and very successful. And in this market, we didn't have a river, but we can do a helicopter. And then the casino, high-end casino like, uh, many that exist. And then a showroom. People were saying, oh, you're going to compete with this. Even the guy who ran the Hard Rock in Las Vegas said we're going to compete with this. No, we're copying the Hard Rock in Las Vegas. Different than this, it has a flat floor. Try serving dinner in this room on New Year's Eve. It's not a flat floor and there's no kitchen. Try having a trade show in this room, you can't. So we have envisioned a, a thing that can be used for trade shows, for dinners, for events, uh, for like that concert in the upper right where people are dancing. A little hard to dance in this room. So we designed something that is a little different than the Genesee Theater and dovetails with the casino. Restaurants, we'll have an assortment of good restaurants. We, we envisioned an Asian restaurant next, next to the Baccarat pit, which is important, a very high-end restaurant that pairs with the mansion and so on. Um, and we haven't figured out yet whether we run these ourselves or have outside restaurant tours. We've done both. Um, and then, uh, uh, of course, the, the bill was just passed. And so we had to move quickly. We're already licensed in four states. Uh, I've, I've been licensed personally in probably twenty states. And, uh, uh, when you go and find a partner, it's very important to find somebody who can get licensed, who's not going to embarrass you and everything else. And the law actually calls for twenty-five percent minority investment and five percent, uh, female investment. We're a public company. I'm sure at least five percent of our stock is held by women, I'm sure. But that's not really what the gaming board's looking for. They want to see a direct investment. So we did the next best thing. We turned to Loop Capital in Sydney, and I'll turn it over to you for a second, um, to help us find investors. And our target is to be forty percent minority and woman-owned. Um, and, uh, we'll take our time to do it right.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Sydney Dillard. And I am a partner and head of corporate investment banking at Loop Capital Markets. Um, Loop is the largest minority-owned investment bank in the country. Um, we are full-service. We work with corporations, governments, and institutions um, to raise capital for strategic growth opportunities. Um, our firm is twenty-two years old. Uh, we're Illinois-headquartered in the financial district of Chicago. And we've helped in the twenty-two years that we've been in business, we've helped our clients raise over a trillion dollars in capital. Uh, we are the most significant underwriter of debt for units of government, um, in the state of Illinois, including having worked here with Waukegan um, as a co-manager on over sixty-five million dollars um, in financings over the last nine years. Our role, um, as Dan mentioned, on the Full House team is to leverage our capabilities as an investor-focused, um, as an investor-focused Illinois-based firm and ensure that minority and women, um, are represented, um, as owners, um, in this project. Up to forty percent, um, of the equity ownership in American Place. We will leverage our extensive network in the greater metropolitan area to support Full House interests in working with minority-owned, um, enterprises. And I will then now turn it over to you, Alex, to talk, um, a little bit more about the project.
Thank you, Sydney. So, uh, my name is Alex Sawyer. I'm Senior Vice President, Head of Development for Full House Resorts. This is a quick, uh, showing of what, uh, our timeline looks like between the temporary phase for the first phase and the second phase. This was designed in conjunction with Canon Design. Uh, Charles Smith on the end is from Canon. They are a local Chicago-based firm. Uh, they were recently named one of the ten most creative firms in America by, um, by Fast Company Magazine. So we are, uh, grateful and honored to have them as part of the team. Obviously, our commitment to the city of Waukegan is going to be huge. Uh, we're going to work, uh, as others will with job fairs to promote local hiring. We're going to promote local vendor opportunities. And that is, uh, going to be the, really the pivotal crux of this, of this whole project. Now, one thing we want to talk about is the, the site. Obviously, all five proposals are on the same site. So we want to talk about what we're proposing for the site. Obviously, we need to do a long-term lease. And we're going to be leasing that. We're proposing for two and a half percent of annual gaming revenues. Now that, we project to be about four million dollars a year. Should our projections be off, that's sort of our baseline projection, we're still guaranteeing a minimum of three million dollars a year. And we are projecting, with, with the temporary casino that we saw on the last slide, so we're going to start paying rent right away. So even in the temporary phase, the city of Waukegan will be getting about seven million dollars a year between the rent and the gaming taxes and the other taxes. And of course, we'd like to purchase, have an option to purchase the site for thirty million dollars. And obviously, all that's open to negotiation, but that's, that's our offer at this point. Um, it wa, it was mentioned a little bit earlier, but it's, it's critical how important it is for this to be our one project in the area. Because, uh, to make it a little more specific and bring it home a little bit, we're not talking about the customers who live in Waukegan or who live in Des, in Des Plaines or who live in Milwaukee. We're talking about the customers who live in Deerfield or Lincolnshire. Now, who's going to market to those customers more heavily? Somebody who's got a casino on equal distance to the south? Or, or somebody who does not? For who this is the only casino in the property? Likewise, let's say you live in Kenosha. Where are you going to get the most marketing dollars spent? From, from us with the only ones? And that's my time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Um, first of all, I want to thank you for not redacting any of your information in your proposal. You're the only proposal that did that. And I appreciate that you let the citizens of Waukegan see your full proposal.
The White House stole our Sharpie.
So I have a question. Um, you mentioned you have a casino in Louisiana that helped uplift the whole community. What, what percentage of the revenues do they get there? Like, we'll only get three and a half percent of the revenue from this casino overall, but.
I, I, I don't recall the exact numbers, but the piece of land was owned by the Port of Lake Charles. So similar to this, where there's a, and the Port Authority is a government entity charged with, uh, finding jobs and tax revenues for the state and the community. Uh, and they actually came to me and said, you know, would I think of this as a casino site? And it was pretty interesting. They took me in by boat. It was a swamp. And as we got off the boat, they had a guy with a big gun. And I'm like, wha, what's the gun for? He's like, there's alligators out here. And I said, well, I've seen enough. And they said, aren't you interested? I said, yeah, I looked at a map. You're two hours from Houston. We can build a casino here that's successful. Now, because it was in a swamp, even the swimming pool had to be unpiling so it wouldn't sink into the swamp. Uh, but we built an eighteen-hole golf course and a, and a thousand-room hotel and a very successful casino. And, um, there are, there are graphs that show what the population of Lake Charles was doing. It was trending down. We opened La Berge, it started trending up. And I literally had mothers come up to me and thank me for building it because otherwise their kids would have gotten out of college and gone to Houston. And instead, they were working in our accounting department or working, uh, somewhere, so.
And ju, just one thing to add, actually, the one in the lower right there, River City, that's in St. Louis County in Missouri. And that was a similar structure. We paid, we did a ninety-nine-year lease there on a county-owned piece of land. And we paid two and a half percent of revenues to them. And the county's very happy with that. And one reason we can afford to do that is because we are the owner and operator of the casino, this group you see up here, okay? So in other words, we are not a group that then has to pay a casino manager or an operator a percentage of revenues to come operate the casino for us. So we're able to turn around and give that money to the city as our landlord in this case.
Um, I do want to say I also like the idea of leasing the land as opposing to selling it because we can then divert some of that money to our school district if we so decided to do that. And then it would also be tied into the revenue potentially. So I, I do like the whole idea of leasing the land as opposed to selling it.
One of the things I like with this plan is it's different. It goes outside tapping only our community in a thirty-mile radius. This is trying to make Waukegan a destination point. And that, that makes me curious. I, I want to investigate that a little bit more and see what's involved. Um, I, like I said, it, the facility looks beautiful, but it's kind of the first time I've heard tonight more of this as a destination point.
Maybe that's part of the advantage of living in Las Vegas. We're out in the middle of the Mojave Desert. It's not even a pretty desert. And yet it's become one of the biggest tourist attractions on earth. Um, and we have to figure out creative ways, whether it's fountains or pirate battles or Cirque du Soleil shows, uh, to incentivize people to either drive three hundred miles from Los Angeles across the desert or fly in from other places. And, uh, and of course, Las Vegas has been very, very successful. But we, we, a, at this point in Las Vegas, the non-gaming revenues exceed the gaming revenues. Those big casinos, they, they get more revenues from the. Those big casinos, they get more revenues from the rooms and the food and beverage and the shows and everything than they do from the casino.
I just did a little tour, and one of them was your facility, in the Tahoe and Reno area, and I understand what you're saying is it's very hard to make a destination point. So you have to do something big and spectacular to get people there.
Even in Lake Charles, Louisiana, we were not the first casino there. There were already existing casinos there, and they were very simple casinos. And we were the first ones who said, let's do something more than gaming. And we did an 18-hole golf course and a 1,000-room hotel. And I remember the CEO of Pinnacle said I was going to bankrupt, or CEO of Harrah's said I was going to bankrupt the company building it. The funny thing is, we did fine, and Harrah's went bankrupt. And so it's a much stronger business if it's not just gaming. If all you have is slot machines, and then they say, oh, we're going to let more VLTs exist, or we're going to allow a casino rebuilt 10 miles away, then you're all, the slot machines are all the same. It's what do you wrap them in? You know, what do you put them? And what do you put around them? And how do you attract that different person? And so, and even if you go around the country in regional gaming, where it becomes competitive, people start thinking about other stuff. And how do you have a golf course? And how do you have a showroom? And how do you have, we just built an RV park at one of our places, thinking that that would be a little different. And the fountain show, frankly, I, we got thinking about this fountain because we said, we need an attraction. Waukegan is not on the Miracle Mile. It's not in the middle of the city. How do we get a wealthy person to travel up here? And we said, we can do a fountain that'll knock your socks off. And you know, you can imagine if that fountain was in this room and water came flying out of every direction. The funny, you know, the guys who started Wet Inc. originally worked for Disney. And if you've ever been to Epcot Center, they have a very simple little fountain where this dollop of water bounces around. And it's been doing that for 40 years, and people stand there mesmerized by this little fountain. The guys who invented that started their own company, went on to build the fountains at Bellagio. There's an incredible fountain in the Singapore Airport now called the Vortex. When you get home, Google it. Vortex Fountain, Singapore Airport. And it's indoors, and it's just this incredible attraction. And people go out to the airport to see the fountain, and we thought, we can do something like that here. And because it should be more than just gaming.
And obviously, a key part of a destination is a hotel. And I believe we are the only group proposing a hotel in Phase 1. Now, we've got an additional hotel in Phase 2, an additional 150 rooms, like a lot of our competitors have. But we have the 20-room mansion that Dan described. That is all part of Phase 1. That's part of our initial commitment.
And then all of the first 24 months?
Correct.
In all your other properties, I get the villas of MGM, right here. I get the villas of MGM. That's Las Vegas.
Did you ever gamble enough to stay at the mansion?
No, no, no. But do you have any other concept like the villas in any of your other properties that would be similar to Waukegan?
Well, Bellagio is not our property now, but I was the head of development when we built it. And the third floor has a wing of villas that are very nice. And MGM built the mansion to compete with Bellagio. Even the original Mirage has villas. When we built the Le Verge Casino in Lake Charles, it has a wing of villas that have butlers, and they're large. In fact, we had, the sort of things you get into is, we had little outdoor gardens. And in Lake Charles, Louisiana, you have to have screens, or you're going to have bugs galore, right? So we had these screened-in gardens on all these villas. And then we decided we were going to have hot tubs. Well, hot tubs actually get kind of gross after a while. And so I decided, let's not have a hot tub. Let's have outdoor bathtubs. But then you get dust in them. Well, then somewhere I learned, and we went and bought these bathtubs, they were $30,000 each, each carved from Italian travertine, Italian marble. So it's stone. So if there's a little dust in it, you don't notice, it's stone. And we wanted it to work like a hot tub, but be a bathtub. So we set up plumbing. You could fill this thing in two minutes. You threw this valve, and there's like a four-inch fire hose that had water that was already preheated, and filled this bathtub that could seat four people. And it was so popular and so successful, we had troubles getting the gamblers out of the hot tub and into the casino, right? But, you know, you have to be creative about these things sometimes. So yes, we have built stuff like this. We've not, you know, this is the first time we've done it as a freestanding hotel. It's a 20-room hotel, which was really almost like an incredible bed and breakfast. But we looked at it and said, there's already three-star hotels across the street. We don't need to compete with them. We can rent rooms from them.
We got about five minutes left, so hold on.
Would you please address the issue about local hiring and working with our union laborers?
Honestly, we don't know enough about the construction trades here yet. I have built several casinos that were union labor and some that were not. When you build in the South, I remember in Le Verge, the head of the electricians' union came in and said he wanted it to be a union job. And I said, fine, how many members do you have? He says, 14. I said, well, we need 200 electricians, right? And so Le Verge was not union. All the stuff we built in Las Vegas is union, what we built in St. Louis is union, and I suspect here that there's a strong building trades unions, and so I suspect what we would build would be all-union. As to the hotel workers' union, you know, I again don't know the local, the local local, I guess you'd say, the local local. In Las Vegas, all the stuff we had was a union, culinary union, and we worked very closely with them. In other markets where it is non-union, we've been non-union. And so it depends on the strength of the local union. I'm not opposed to unions. If you can sit down and work with them, they represent employees well, and if you can work with them, then that's great, so. Oh, I didn't answer your other question about local. Obviously, you prefer to hire local. And one of the nice things about a casino is you don't have to have a college education and make a good living as a dealer, for example. And so we would prefer to hire people locally and help train them and help get them into the job. It's easier for everybody. Why would we want to relocate somebody from somewhere else? That costs money, so.
Alderman, any other questions? You have about just under three minutes if you want to wrap it up.
Well, I don't want to waste any more of your time, so we're honored to be here. We feel we have the best proposal for Waukegan. We don't feel we're entitled to this by any means. We feel that we're here trying to earn it by putting forth the best proposal for Illinois and for the city of Waukegan and for Lake County. And thank you so much for your time and for your consideration. We appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
The consultant's next.
How are we doing audience time? How are we doing audience time? Oh, I don't know, I think so. Seems like a bike over. I don't like it, yeah. The consultant.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you want to say anything? I'll introduce you.
All right, right now, we're going to have, we'll be bringing in the city's consultant, and he will give kind of an overview of where we're all at right now. Pretty safe? All right, here you go, Charlie.
Thank you. My name's Charlie Johnson, and I'm president of Johnson Consulting. We're based in Chicago, but work all over the country. I'm joined by, with Sarah Emmerton of Johnson Consulting as well, and she and I have been working on this project together. Technical question. How do I advance the slides? Right here. The gentleman here. Oh, I just give you the high sign? All right, thank you. Next slide. Next slide. Our firm is based in Chicago. We are hired regularly by municipalities to help vet developer proposals. We've worked a lot in the gaming industry. We helped in Las, excuse me, New Orleans, West Springfield, and several other jurisdictions, helping communities make the wisest decisions about these projects. Next slide, please. Our job is to serve as advisor to the city. We're helping facilitate the interviews, and our job is really to be a third-party advisor that's independent of all the bidders that are here. Our firm did not do a market study, per se, but obviously, it's incumbent upon us to comment on anything that's out of line and out of order. Next slide. We're about a, I would say, a third of the way complete with our work. We've reviewed all the proposals. We've had the opportunity to ask each of the bidders during a presentation to our team, as well as representatives from the city during a proposal process. We're here today at the public hearing. There's two weeks now for people to provide additional commentary that we will also be reflecting upon and taking under advisement in our analysis. Then we'll prepare a report that will analyze and provide statistical information and observations about each of the proposals that we've received. And then we'll be at the city council meeting on October 17th. Next slide, next slide. You know, it's remarkable to me of the quality of the five bidders that you have. This is a very fortunate city to be in a place where none of the bidders are outrageously, like we see in other situations. So you have five very compelling and good people, and we don't see any fatal flaws in any of the proposals. There are two that have regional gaming operations in this, in the marketplace, the regional marketplace. And, you know, we were impressed with the fact that the nature of the operators, as well as the development team that you have. So I think you ought to be very pleased with that fact. I think it's, all of the groups indicate that they will be able to deliver the minority investments, and we don't have any reason to doubt that. But that's the balance of our work, is be testing the numbers and doing a supplemental due diligence on the various proposals. Next slide, please. I think each of the bidders have provided an overview of their proposals. There is, again, there is, and I think as we advise the city, we're looking for fatal flaws that would disqualify, rather than advance a single opportunity, and we haven't seen those fatal flaws in these proposals. Next slide, please. I am just presenting facts that were reported in the various proposals at this juncture. You can see the scale of the various proposals that have been submitted from gaming positions and gaming tables, tables and slots. And, you know, there are differences, and they do influence the sales volume that's reported by each of the bidders. It's interesting, the two, excuse me. Next slide, please. We also report on employment. It is, the people range from 1,000, excuse me, to a low of 650 to over, well over 1,000 employees. The two that have the highest gaming volume proposed also have the highest employees proposed, and happen to be the two operators in the regional marketplace. The blue line is jobs that will occur outside of the casino, based upon vendor sales and other employment that's generated at hotels and retail and other businesses. Next slide. Tax revenue. You can see that the volume ranges from a low of $173 million to approximately $280 plus or minus dollars in terms of gaming volume. We're not going to react to that at this juncture. And then also, the tax revenues are generally calculated properly by the bidders. North Point did not include admissions tax in their tax revenues, but you'll see that the proportions are in line with the sales volumes that are projected by each of the bidders. Next slide. So this comes again from the proposals, and I think they've been announced by each of the bidders today. We see purchase prices ranging from $5.6 million plus appraised value to a high of, if one were to do cash rather than a land lease, $30 million. No reaction to that from a professional standpoint. Obviously, more money on these is generally good, but I think all of them have a willingness to negotiate the purchase price, as well as the other payments that may be made, the 2% or 3% of gross gaming volume is not necessarily included in these purchase prices for the land. This was disclosed specifically as land purchase prices. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over. Those are really our commentary at this point in time. We still have a lot of work to do, and we're here to help you all throughout the process as you all think about these and make your decisions on what to, how to advance, and what proposals to submit to the gaming commission.
Thank you, thank you. We're going to move into public time, but we do have a comment by Mayor Parnell. Is Mayor Parnell in the House from Park City?
Good evening. I'm Steve Parnell, mayor of the city of Park City. I know you have a big decision to make that affects the future of Waukegan, but as the mayor of one of Waukegan's nearby communities, your decision will also be a big impact on our future as well. In my 18 years as mayor, we've tried to work with Waukegan leaders to build bridges and be good neighbors. I've always known that working together can lift up all of our communities. In Park City, we work very hard to develop strategic plans for economic redevelopment, just like you do. I know you will do the right thing for the region. For what it's worth, I wanted to share my observations. I've gotten to know a lot about Rush Street Gaming and Churchill Downs and their plans for Rivers Casino Waukegan. To me, this is a bottom-line decision, just like decisions we all have to make every day as local elected officials. We have to maximize the revenues for our taxpayers. Rush Street and Churchill Downs run the most successful, profitable, and well-known casino in the region. Rivers Casino Des Plaines has been the state's most successful casino, pardon, since the day they opened. They have the proven track record in financing to be just as successful than Waukegan. Just like Waukegan, we've become increasingly diverse. It is important for me, to my residents, that they will have the opportunity to get hired by the casino, or to have business opportunities. I'm impressed that six out of 10 Rivers Casinos employees are minorities. They do a great job of contracting with local businesses, spending millions every year. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Deb Wazek representing the city of North Chicago.
Good evening. My name is Deb Wazek. I'm chief of staff for the city of North Chicago. I'm here on behalf of Mayor Rockingham, who regrets he can't be with you tonight because he is at the Illinois Municipal League Con- who regrets he can't be with you tonight because he is at the Illinois Municipal League Conference, but here is his testimony. I have been proud to serve the citizens of my community since 2005. We worked hard to build a more healthy and prosperous city. We've made North Chicago safer. We've invested in public safety technology. We've made our neighborhoods more vital by demolishing abandoned homes. And we've created jobs by attracting new businesses. Our initiatives have not only made North Chicago stronger, they've helped us and our neighbors, Waukegan and Lake County. We're all in this together. In North Chicago, we have often achieved our goals by partnering with private sector leaders. And we share our vision for building up our community. I believe Rivers Casino Waukegan would be the kind of blue-chip business with whom Waukegan should partner. Their track record will ensure Waukegan, my community of North Chicago, Park City, and Lake County all maximize new revenues to our communities. First of all, Rivers and its owners, Rush Street Gaming and Churchill Downs, built and operate the most successful casino in Illinois and the most successful regional businesses in the country. They are the most financially secure company competing for this opportunity. There is no doubt they have the wherewithal to build this casino and open for business. Secondly, because of their track record of success, they are sure to bring their expertise and marketing to this casino and ensure we maximize our tax revenues. From hearing the presentations, Rivers believes it can gross much more money than the other applicants. Although the City of North Chicago is not the host community, we are receiving 15% of the local share of gaming taxes. This means Rivers is projecting hundreds of thousands more in additional dollars for our bottom line than the others. We also believe in providing opportunities. Rivers and Rush Street Gaming share this vision. In Des Plaines, 2/3 of the employees and 1/3 of the casino's executives are minorities. Rivers Des Plaines spends $8 million every year with minority-owned businesses and more than $40 million a year overall on local businesses. When Rivers tells you they will be committed to a local spend in Waukegan, they mean it. As a neighbor and a fellow local elected official, I know you will make the right decision. For my part, that decision is easy. Rivers has a proven track record of running successful casinos, generating the most local tax revenues, and providing opportunities for jobs and contracts to local people. Please consider bringing Rivers to Waukegan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to now go into public time. If you line up along here, you'll be signing up before you do. When you do speak, say your name. And you have two minutes. David, are you ready? You're going to. Tip it, tip it this way a little bit.
All right, good evening. My name is Jennifer Taylor, and for the past eight years, I've had the pleasure of working at Rivers Casino in Des Plaines. After several promotions, I'm now a table games manager. I'm excited to share my passion for Rivers with you and why I believe Waukegan would benefit from having a Rivers Casino. I can attest that Rivers provides its employees with the opportunity to grow, develop, and achieve their personal best. Rivers knows each of their team members. We're not numbers on a sheet. We're people that they believe in, that they invest in, and they support day in and day out. I came to Rivers from a casino in Indiana. There's something special and different about Rivers. That's why I've personally recruited dozens of friends and former colleagues to join our Rivers family. Every day I wake up and I love my job. I love the people I work with. I love that the property encourages managers and supervisors to mentor, develop, and grow our people. As leaders, we're encouraged to find individuals with the right attitude and character, not experiences they can list on paper. Rivers provides everyone with the opportunity to learn the skills they need to be successful in their careers. When I helped open the Rivers property, we had hundreds of individuals come to us with no experience in the gaming industry. We trained them, and I'm proud that we still have a tremendous number of original team members with us today. I've risen faster and further in my career at Rivers than I ever would have imagined. One of the most fulfilling aspects of my job is being able to pay it forward and help coach and mentor our team members to advance in their careers. People want to work for an organization that invests in a community and is responsible corporate citizens. Since its open, Rivers has donated over $12 million in scholarships, grants, and donations to educational and charitable organizations. On a personal level, I was able to suggest that Rivers invest in an educational program at my former high school, and they did. It is so fulfilling to work at a company like this. Rivers takes care of its people. Rivers takes care of its customers, and Rivers takes care of the community. It is with this culture of giving back and making a difference in the community that separates Rivers.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Good evening, my name is Paula Mahalik, and I live in Orland Park. And I'm here to tell you that Rivers Casino would be an excellent partner for the City of Waukegan. For the past seven and a half years, I have been a proud team member at Rivers Casino Des Plaines. It's important for you to know that Rivers transforms the lives of their team members. Personally, I have been promoted twice, and I'm currently the beverage operations manager. Rivers has given me a lot of leadership opportunities. It's a great place to work. Since Rivers has opened their doors, they have become Illinois's favorite casino. My teammates and I work hard every day to maintain that position. I believe one of the reasons we are so successful is because of how Rivers treats its team members. I have worked in the industry 10 years prior, joining Rivers Casino. I was never promoted. Before Rivers, I hit a job. I currently now have a career. Rivers gives its team members careers with the opportunity to grow, develop, and advance. I have promoted both of my assistant managers to their current leadership positions. I have personally participated in dozens of job fairs since I have joined the company. It is amazing that we have people come to us with no experience in the industry, and we are able to provide them the skills, training, and opportunity to embark on a new career. That's what makes my job so rewarding. I get to help people change their lives for the better by joining our team. Rivers will invest in the community and be a great neighbor. I have been able to bring my team to dozens of soup kitchens and shelters across the Chicagoland area. We do everything from meal prep, service, and cleanup. Activities like this reward your soul and make you know you're affiliated with people who do business the right way. In total, my colleagues and I have logged 34,000 hours volunteering at organizations across the region. Rivers has a culture that inspires us to give back to our community. I am the mother of two children, a wife. The Benefit and Compensation Program.
Thank you.
And the flexibility.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Christian Gomez, and I reside in Streamwood, Illinois. I'm here to tell you that Rivers Casino would be an excellent partner for the City of Waukegan. I know this because in the past three and a half years, I have been working in various positions at Rivers Casino. I encourage you all to look at their record, how they operate, how they keep their word, and how they give back to the community, and how they transform the life of the team members and families. In my case, I came to Rivers Casino after working in the hospitality industry for about eight years. When I visited the casino and made my decision, I saw that people were happy and they treated their guests very well. I came to the property as a food and beverage supervisor, but I had the ambition to further my career in gaming resources. Not only was I supported in this decision with little experience in that department, but I've seen it happen with many other team members as well. Since working at Rivers, I've furthered my career, been able to get married, bought a house, and see the same thing happen with other employees as well. Rivers provides careers for the team members, not just jobs. They gave me a chance to switch over to HR, but they also do this for many team members as well. In my first role when I started, I worked closely with a lot of team members, and, and I saw how great of an impact Rivers had for their education and also to further them in their career there. These are personal experiences, and I know that residents from Waukegan and family members here will benefit from that as well. Since they've, since Rivers Casino has opened, Rivers gives us provided more than $3.1 million in scholarships for their employees or their family members to attend college. There are not many employers that invest in their employees or families the way that Rivers does. Rush Street Gaming and Churchill Downs are also two of the most well-established successful gaming companies in the nation. They know that treating their employees well provides a better customer experience. I know you, you guys have some great choices out there, but from my experience, you should really consider and pick Rivers Waukegan. Rush Street Gaming knows how to run a successful casino that supports its team members. Rivers Waukegan will generate a lot of tax dollars for your residents, and while they are at it, Rivers.
Time, thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Good evening. My name is Felicia Dixon, and I'm proud to say that I recently moved to Waukegan, Illinois. I'm actually still unpacking my boxes. Imagine how excited I was to learn that my company, Rivers Casino, was bidding to open a casino here in my new hometown. For the past seven and a half years, I've been a dealer at Rivers Casino in Des Plaines. I worked at five other casinos before I came to Rivers, and trust me when I tell you that no company has ever believed in me like Rivers believes in me. Rivers is the fairest in the industry. They are fair to their team members, fair to the customers, and fair to the communities where they operate. That's why I think they are so popular with customers. I chose to work at Rivers because I wanted better opportunity for my family. I make more as a dealer than I did in any other supervisory positions at other properties. River takes care of their people. The comprehensive benefits they provide gives you security that you have an employer who will be with you, even when times get tough for you and your family. My experience working at Rivers and the training I've received has made me a better person. I've developed as a person because I feel so valued. I have customers that come see me regularly because of the atmosphere and the relationship we've developed. We strive to exceed expectations every day. Rivers is a great place to work. I made some great friends at the property. I'm a new, I'm a new neighbor to all of you in Waukegan, but I hope you will welcome Rivers as your new neighbor too, because they will invest in your people and community. As my colleagues have mentioned before, Rivers Des Plaines has donated over 12 million, 12 million in scholarships, grants, and donations to educational and charitable organizations. They take suggestions, suggestions from local team members on what programs, initiatives, and causes they should support in their communities. It's a dynamic process. My, my opportunity at Rivers has been a blessing, and I've loved it since day one. I know that Rivers would be a great asset to have in the City of Waukegan. I hope that your residents and others will be given the chance to join the Rivers family. Thank you.
All right, I have someone's keys here. So if you're looking for your car keys, I got them.
Good evening, my name is Noelia Patino, and I want to share with you how working at Rivers Casino has changed my life. I joined the organization two years ago as a human resources administrator and was recently promoted to an HR coordinator. Before I came to Rivers, as a college student, I was looking for an opportunity with a company that had a good reputation and long-term potential. Rivers has had, has a fantastic reputation for how it treats its team members. I received several firsthand reviews that they were a great company to work for, so I applied for a position. I was thrilled to get my foot in the door, but when I applied, I had no idea of the fantastic benefits that they provide each and every team member. I was excited to learn that they offer tuition reimbursement and scholarships for their employees or family members to go to college. I'm currently finishing my degree at North Park University, where I'm studying business administration with a concentration in human resources. The assistance I received from Rivers is completely covering my educational costs, including my tuition and books. I had an entry-level position when I started at the company, and they provided me with this life-changing benefit. How many young people can be in a situation where they can learn, earn, and get experience in their cho- chosen career? I hit my jackpot, so to say. Rivers hires local and invests in their team members. All of us who work there know we have the opportunity to grow. That's why I plan on staying with Rivers after I graduate. Rivers took a chance on me, and I'm grateful for the opportunity. I know you'd be wise to take a chance on Rivers and let them transform the lives of area residents with rewarding career opportunities. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Cunningham and City Council members. My name is Devon Maddox, and I am Vice President and General Counsel for Rivers Casino Des Plaines. I'd like to just read a few excerpts of a testimonial from the City of Des Plaines Mayor, Matt Bogich, on the impact that Rivers Des Plaines has made on the City of Des Plaines. Dear Mayor Cunningham and City Council members, I want to share the City of Des Plaines' experience with Rush Street Gaming and Rivers Casino. As you can see. Will do what they say, be a responsible operator, improve the quality of life for families, and spur business growth and development. Rivers has delivered on its promises, including open casino on time. Rivers team knows how to design, build, and operate some of the most successful casino properties in the nation. They developed and built Rivers Des Plaines' property on time and responsibly planned for the long-term growth of the property. Local hiring and career training. Rivers is a jobs engine and provides careers for over 1,400 employees. I have been impressed with how they train area residents, even those with no experience in the gaming industry, to obtain the skills they need to start and be successful in their careers. Rivers, as you know, has donated over 12 million back into the Chicagoland community through scholarships, grants, and donations to educational and charitable organizations. On an ongoing basis, the team at Rivers works with community organizations to identify programs and areas to support, such as Veterans Back-to-Work Boot Camp, which was started just a few years ago. Rivers has also contracted and worked with numerous Illinois-based businesses. They are committed to contracting with MeBeWeBeDeBe, that's businesses owned by minorities, women, and persons with disabilities. From 2014 and 2018, Rivers spent over $37 million.
Time, thank you.
With MeBeWeBeDeBe businesses. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Kristen Colianis, and while you've heard from some of my colleagues at Rivers Des Plaines, I would like to read into the record a testimonial from our State Representative Jake Wheatley Jr. talking about the impact our company, our company has had in Pennsylvania. Dear Mayor Cunningham and the City Council members, as a State Representative of the 19th Legislature District of Pennsylvania, it is my pleasure to conform, confirm support of Rivers Casino and Rush Street Gaming to develop and operate a casino in Waukegan. Since 2009, Rivers Casino Pittsburgh has proven to be a proud community partner, great place to work, and a strong economic engine for western Pennsylvania. Rush Street has vested interests in the community. To date, Rivers Casino has generated $75 million to help fund construction expenses for PPG Paint Arena, which is a local sports and entertainment venue. Rivers has also committed $3 million to the redevelopment of Hill District, a historic Pittsburgh neighborhood. Notably, Rivers Casino employees, approximately 1,700 team members, including 93% from Pittsburgh and surrounding counties. Approximately 165 of those team members have been there since day one, with more than 1,400 internal promotions and many more to come. Also, through the Rivers Casino Community Champions Program, team members annually donate 2,000 staff hours to local nonprofits, paint shelters, serve food, or clean up the riverbanks. The casino has generated more than $1.2 billion in tax revenue for the city, county, and Commonwealth. Likewise, Rivers Casino recognizes that hiring locally and maintaining the highest standards for operations is critical to the success of not only the casino, but the City of Pittsburgh. For the reasons stated above and many more, I truly believe that Rivers Casino Waukegan would be an incredible asset to the City of Waukegan. Sincerely, State Representative Jake Wheatley Jr.
Hi, my name is Kristen Montgomery, and I would like to read into the record a testimonial from LaShawn Burton Falk at the Manchester Citizens Corporation, talking about how Rivers works with nonprofits and development organizations. Dear Mayor Cunningham and City Council members, through my work as Executive Director of the Manchester Citizens Corporation, I am a big enthusiast of the work and opportunities that Rivers Casino Pittsburgh has brought, not only to the Manchester Citizens Corporation, but to the north shore and city of Pittsburgh. Therefore, I am proud to offer support for Rivers Casino and Rush Street Gaming to develop and, and operate a casino in Waukegan, Illinois. MCC is one of the nation's oldest community development organizations. It is one of the first urban community-based organizations in the country to link historic preservation with economic development. The organization has a track record of leveraging resources to create housing units, both affordable and market-rate, single-dwelling, multifamily, and senior housing. Rivers Casino has been nothing short of an incredible partner to MCC since day one. Rivers Casino team members have continued to steadfast partners with MCC. One day each month, the Rivers Casino, Casino Community Champions embark on a community. embark on a community service day with local nonprofits. MCC has had the pleasure of working with Rivers team members for the past several years. This charity work goes on an extremely long with our organization. On behalf of the Manchester Citizens Corporation, we truly believe that the development of Rivers Casino in Waukegan will be an extremely valuable asset to your city and surrounding communities. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Banks from Rivers Des Plaines and I would like to read into the record a testimonial from Eastern Minority Supplier Development Council President Valerie Colfield, talking about how Rivers works with minority businesses. Dear Mayor Cunningham and City Council members, as President and CEO of the Eastern Minority Supplier Development Council, I'm very pleased to submit this letter of support for Rivers Casino and Rush Street Gaming to develop and operate a casino in Waukegan, Illinois. I speak from experience of Rush Street's longstanding corporate commitment to promote business opportunities for minority business enterprises locally and regionally. In Pennsylvania, where Rush Street operates Rivers Casino and Sugar House Casino, the company's Me Be We Be annual spend is 6 million and 7 million respectively. Rush Street's effort to promote opportunities for minority and women-owned businesses is proactive and ongoing. By example, in Pitts, Pittsburgh, Rivers Casino and Rush Street recently announced a new development of a $60 million hotel adjacent to the casino. Even before groundbreaking, Rivers Casino Pittsburgh hosted a Me Be We Be De Be outreach event with the African-American Chamber of Commerce and the Eastern Minority Supplier Development Council to connect subcontractors with short and long-term opportunities. Rush Street also holds periodic supplier diversity sessions at its casinos to continuously recruit minority and women-owned businesses and to help guide new vendors through the gaming board's licensing process. For these reasons and more, I'm confident Rivers Casino Waukegan will be a committed, uh, will be a committed community partner for Waukegan, its business community, and its residents. Many thanks for your consideration. Sincerely, Valerie Colfield, President and CEO, Eastern Minority Supplier Development Council. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Mukesh Bada and I am the managing owner of Holiday Inn Express and Suites in Waukegan. As you know, we are in the fountain square and there's more than $100 million worth of hotel room investment in that area alone. So we are supportive of the casino and the project and everything. But I do request all of the developers and particularly select a vendor that is not building a hotel upfront. Give us five, 10 years so that we could recover from the current low occupancy time that we had. For your information, we are about 9% down in occupancy in that area. Revenue per available room is down by almost 10%. This is the most recent results we got today. So just be aware of it. Just because somebody says we're gonna give money, uh, don't hurt the local businesses. That's very important. Now, we did talk with Parawati Casino. They met with all of the local owners, hotel owners in the area. And they're not planning to build hotels in the very initial stages and that's great. We support all of his proposals, but don't hurt the local business. Thank you.
Hello, uh, council members, Mr. Mayor. My name is Colin Byers. I do not work at Rivers Casino. I was born and raised in Waukegan, Illinois and I love this city. I'd like to quote President Obama speaking on the legacy of civil rights protesters. He said of them, "What greater form of patriotism is there than the belief that America is not yet finished?" I ask you, what do the next 10 years for Waukegan look like? Because it's not finished. Video gaming has already proved detrimental to the populace. Will you embrace the legacy of casinos' increase in crime, debt, and lower standards of living? When casinos win, we all lose because we know the house always wins. Or will Waukegan live up to the motto "City of Progress" by leading Illinois in solar energy production? Or providing fresh local produce from a 32-acre farm? Or any of the other countless ideas for that space to serve and enrich this community? Not serve those who would prey on us or buy seats on city council? Alderman, what will your legacies be? Will your wards be proud and say that you did your best to do your duty as custodians to preserve and protect their welfare? Mr. Mayor, what kind of legacy will you leave as the first black mayor of the city of Waukegan? Who will have benefited most from your service? Will it be a challenge for the next mayor to fill your shoes? As all of you leave this place, remember the voices of those you serve, the residents, not those bust in telling you that this is not what we need, not what we want, and this process is not right. What legacy are you leaving for the next generation to remember you by? Because we remember this fight is not finished. We remember Waukegan is not finished. And we remember your time in office will be.
Good, good evening, everybody. My name is James Martin. I'm a longtime Waukeganyite. I remember going through the streets of Waukegan when we had sidewalks, sidewalk sales down Genesee Street. I remember walking and fishing the government pier where there was a catwalk present. So I'm a Waukeganyite through and through. And, 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 and for the previous gentleman that, that preceded me, I had to really evaluate where it was that I personally stood on this matter of casino, yes or no. And then I thought to myself, I go to Louis' and I love their roasted chicken on Sunday. And, and when my family and friends come into town, I take them to Quonset Pizza. And, and then when I filled up this morning, I went to Thornton's on Grand and Green Bay. And all of those places, if I'm against a casino, then I have to be against those places because they have slot machines in them. So as I, as I reflect and I say outside of the box, where do I stand? I stand for the Patterson brothers so that they're, they can continue their legacy that George had and presented and, and gave them the ability to succeed. I look at friends like Tyler and Jeremiah and, and get them the ability to succeed. I talked to Steve Canoto up, up North Pub and he said, "James, Jimmy, if it weren't for the slot machines, I would have boarded up and closed my doors." Many of you right here go to North Avenue Tap and you play bagels and vodch and you're part of the tournament. So the casino is already here, people. Waukegan, wake up, it's already here. We're not gonna, it's not going away, it's coming. And, and, and North Point Casino was the only one that said, "We want Waukegan first." We want Waukegan first. We want in order to, we want to use the local vendors. We want to be able to use the local businessmen and women who have, are the fabric and the, and the very frontier of what we hold dear as Waukegan. Because I am born and raised Waukegan. I am Waukegan revisited. I am all for Waukegan and for, for, for Waukegan all. I am Waukegan gastronauts.
Time, thank you.
I'm Jeremiah Johnson on Quonset Pizza, so thank you for the plug there, Jimmy. That was nice. Uh, when I was first approached to be part of this project by North Point, I was excited from a business aspect, but also a little apprehensive for what it meant for our town and the city. So throughout the whole process, I've asked Michael and the guys from Warner, "What are you gonna do? What are you gonna do for us? What are you gonna do for the town?" And I think today they showed 50 million reasons of what they plan on doing for the town, along with partnering with all the local vendors and shops in town. So I, I gotta put my support with them and I'm, I'm proud that they made me a part of the team. So thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Good evening. My name is Chriselli. I've also lived, worked, and gone to school in Waukegan for the past 20 years. Um, I've had a speech, but after listening to everybody, um, I pretty much just took the main points. And what I realized is that the only people who actually talked to the local business owners and sat down in a restaurant is, uh, Point, I'm sorry, North Point Casino. And I'm so excited to work with them because they're actually working with the local businesses and I hope you consider them so we can make this a better.
Good evening. My name is Janet Nakhtara. I live in Waukegan since 1989. My son was born and raised in Waukegan and graduated in Lake County. I graduated in Lake County College. I have helped in many organizations to help and support communities in many different ways. I've seen many businesses come and go during many times living in Waukegan. Now, I don't have a business, but I am a resident and I feel that this project is the next big thing here in Waukegan. Waukegan's been waiting for something like this for a long time. I also would like to mention, I didn't hear any of the developers here considering partnering up with any of the local businesses, giving them the opportunity as builder contractors or, or food service vendors. Only North Port, North Point Casino thought of local businesses and took the time to visit them and offer partnerships because to them, it is important to bring local businesses as their partner. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stacy Bullard and I am a local business person in the community. My office is in Waukegan. When I go home every day, when I fill up my tank, I fill it up in Waukegan. I don't have no more than five miles to drive back to work, to home. So when I looked at the presentations today, it was obvious that everybody, they proposed the same thing. They say, uh, they want to do a nice layout. They want to add jobs. They want to give money back to the city. They want to add entertainment. Everybody's gonna do that. What makes it, you know, council, it's up to us to make the best choice. And it's only one. And I say, "No point." Well, I heard the other ones say, "You know what? We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna add jobs and we're gonna use, we're gonna work with the local community." Well, guess what? No point is already doing that. They said, they, they say we're gonna, they say we're going to work with local businesses. Well, No Point has already reached out to the Black Chamber. They say we're gonna work with minority participation. No point has already made the commitment, no waivers. They're gonna work with the construction and we're gonna make a difference in this town. So we could, we could hear people with the proposals and say what they're gonna do. No point is already doing it. So I implore everybody to please, please, let's not get tied up into people saying that, you know, uh, "I'm a good employee" or whatever, I'm, you know, not gonna do waivers. Go with the one that is gonna prove it, the one that is doing it. And when I say doing it, we all have commitments. If you looked at Quonset, you looked at all the other restaurants, Big Ed's. I mean, he's already reached out to us. Nobody else have. And my whole thing is, as a minority contractor, we have always been promised the, the, uh, uh, the smoke. But here we have a commitment. And I'll tell you this, our commitment is to the local community. And I'll tell you this one more thing before I go. I love what they said, you know, some of the other ones said. They said, "We want to be good neighbors." You know?
Time, thank you.
I'm gonna tell you this. No point is already here. They're a resident.
Time.
My name is Joseph Webb. Uh, I ran a trade company here in Waukegan. And, uh, Mr. Bullock, who just spoke, he and I have been in the trenches to work towards fair and equitable treatment for minority businesses in this area. Uh, not just so that, uh, so that they can get contracts, which is an important thing, but so that they can be stable. You know, some of the people who have businesses, you know how difficult that, that is. But one of the things that we have to keep our, our focus on is that there's a big difference between income and wealth. So all of these companies are gonna offer jobs. That's income. Professional athletes, they make a lot of income. But Magic Johnson took his income and built theaters. That's wealth. Wealth is legacy building. Wealth, wealth is what you pass to your children. If you look around Waukegan and, and even North Chicago and Zion, one of the questions you have to ask yourself is, what are the substantial minority businesses in those communities? How many 25 to 150 million dollar businesses that you can go to in this community and see a minority face on it? Not many, if any. So let's not get confused about the small things. We want people who understand this community, who's invested in this community, and have the long-term vision that at the end of this, there's gonna be minority contractors left to offer jobs beyond serving, dealing cards, and running crap tables. We need electricians, plumbers, pipe-
Time, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Maurice Stretch Barnett, the operator, operator of Stretch's Sports Bar and Grill. 17-year local licensed realtor and former Harlem Globetrotter, born and raised in Waukegan. As a local minority business owner with a longstanding relationship with Roger Brom, um, employee and confidant of Michael Bond, I feel it's important for me to address the council tonight. Right now, we have options. Options to choose who we want to develop our city into the thriving district it is meant to be. Many people feel that this casino is inevitable. If that is indeed the case, the question becomes, who is the best partner for our needs, our community needs? Knowing Michael and developing a personal connection with several members of the staff and his team throughout the past years that I've been open, which is two and a half years over at the Stretch's Sports Bar, I know that this team has taken a few ideas and advice that I've given. And that is, uh, to, to build partnerships locally, support local businesses, including some of the, the events that we've held for the children. We've had many long talks about my personal philanthropic goals and how they align with the, what they do as a team and support. I impress upon you, do not make the mistake of choosing someone who does not know the struggle here in our community. We need to select the person that's willing to put in the work. Whichever company that is, that's chosen, I'd like to see something in writing that shows a true commitment to the educational systems aimed at educating our youth to one day become the future leaders and developers in this community that I was born and raised in.
Thank you.
Let's do the right thing, people.
Time, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Cunningham and City Council members. My name is Patricia Handy and 71 years ago, I was born in the city of Waukegan. And I've been a lifelong resident ever since. I just want to know, let you know that formerly I was a manager at Toby's Tavern and Grill, which is a local favorite. And Toby's has the video gaming terminals. And we know there might be a slight decrease there, but I think the revenue that will be generated by a casino here in Waukegan will outweigh that. Everyone I've been talking to over the last 15 years when I managed the establishment, we're all excited about a casino coming to the area. And once we heard that Waukegan was gonna finally get a casino, there was just a lot more excitement. And it's for two reasons, jobs and more jobs. Construction jobs and gaming jobs. And we need those jobs in the city. I think the revenue that's gonna be generated is something that we all are gonna benefit from. We're all excited about it. Now, I think the city has enough intelligent people. They'll make a good decision on who they choose for this, uh, project. But what I think is very important is that we need to look at who, who knows our community and who has demonstrated an interest in elevating this community. And I've only heard one, uh, project today do that, and that's North Point. I know the communities- I know the community strongly supports this project and I have faith that you will make the right decision for our area. Thank you very much and good luck.
Hello, my name is Christelle Ayers and I'm a small business owner here in Waukegan. I own A-list limousine and bus. And we're the largest transportation service in the Waukegan area, so we're excited about that. So thank you for your support for that. But we also want to say that we're a certified minority-owned business and veteran-owned business. And we predict that the casino development is going to be life-changing for me and my employees. I expect a huge increase in business from a project like this and the idea inspires me to keep growing my business. In fact, the, I believe that the Waukegan area really needs this development and it's something that will bring more people to the area. I think this project is the perfect way to go. In fact, I wish it was built last week. I love this city and I believe in the vision that Waukegan is bringing forward and the mayor. I believe that we can become a place for all people to come and visit from around this area and far from this area. This project can be just the beginning for Waukegan. I believe that in fact, for it to be the best that it can be, we have to make sure that there's funding set aside specifically- that there's funding set aside specifically for the schools, because the schools will generate income for Waukegan schools, North Chicago schools, Park City, and beyond. I also believe that local shuttles should be a part of it, so please keep that in mind, so we can get people to work. Uh, but whomever we choose, we just want to make sure that the funding is there and that we, um, we see the city continue to grow. And, uh, I guess since I got a couple more seconds, I'll just say, um, we should definitely make sure that, we are making sure that the self-exclusion, because I've seen that at some of, some of the casinos, not that I go often, but where they really do make sure that they're not letting people get themselves in financial trouble through self-exclusion, and that is something that we really want to make sure that is promoted at whatever casino.
My name is Holly Rosenberg. I live in Kenosha, Wisconsin. I grew up in Niles, over in Cook County, and Lake County here is very special to me. Uh, Mayor and, uh, the city of Waukegan, thank you for the public hearing, public, uh, program here. I'm concerned, though, about the Waukegan and the Lake County residents. My question is, who's going to be paying for the construction and the continual upkeep of this casino? Uh, will the Waukegan and Lake County residents be having to do that for the rest of their lives? That's what my question is. Um, I certainly look forward to, uh, keeping up with further developments on the casino. It is certainly a very worthy project in this town, uh, which has a great history, as we all know. So, that's my question, really. Who's gonna be paying for this project?
Yes, good evening, Margaret Carrasco. My word's gonna be directed to the, one of the last individuals who I, whose stated he was responsible for the process and did not, and the bidders, and did not see any flaws at all. Excuse me, with all due respect to her, you must not be looking. Let me begin. Um, the statement was made that one of the bidders was the first to arrive here. Yes, that's correct. Let me assure you, in no way are you think that you are entitled. That is incorrect. Every one of the bidders here should, should, are they. If I was a bidder, I would be mad as heck, okay? Are you having a fair shake? Um, let me begin with a list, detailed list, that I have submitted to the U.S. Attorney General, Illinois Gaming Board, Department of Justice, Homeland Security, and the Lake County State's Attorney. First of all, 85% of Waukegan is Latino, Spanish-speaking. None of the documents are in Spanish, no, no accommodations for Spanish-speaking people. It wasn't even advertised to our Latino community. Next, um, the number one complaint that I've heard from, um, the community is complaints by a particular individual here in the room, and I'm so glad he's here, one of our bidders, um, of intimidation, bullying, harassment, threats, violations of residents' civil rights. For those other bidders, let me just let you know, he's the number one hated bidder here in Waukegan by our residents. Next, let me continue on with some of the flaws. There is no responsible safeguards in place to protect the public and local businesses, and the need for more surveillance, monitoring, and restrictions to prevent this intimidation.
Time, thank you.
Hello, uh, my name is Juan Curiel, and I'm a Mexican-American, so I'm here and, um, I think this is a great opportunity, um, whenever there's new construction, new development, that's always great. Um, I'm just very excited, you know, uh, with, with the entertainment, uh, industry, and I'm sure that, uh, everybody involved in this project is responsible. So, uh, with that being said, uh, I'm for the casino. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Thalen, and I am an addictions counselor for over 20 years. I'm also a problem and compulsive gambling counselor. I work for Nikasa Behavioral Health Services. We've been providing counseling to the Lake County community for over 50 years, and we have two locations in Lake County. I was very pleased to hear discussions of problem gambling when we were talking earlier, when we heard all the bidders speaking, because any discussion of tax revenue and expansion and all of that really has to acknowledge the potential social costs of problem gambling. And those include, uh, up to job, job loss, bankruptcy, debt, divorce, homelessness, even suicide. If you didn't know it, uh, problem gamblers commit suicide at a rate higher than any other addiction. So, all that being said, we know that most people who gamble are able to do so responsibly, but there are a number of people, a small percentage, who are at increased risk. That is, young adults, senior citizens, military and veterans, some ethnic minorities, as well as athletes. So, I know that there is a lot of excitement about, uh, a new casino, about sports betting. I know there's a lot of decisions to be made by our leaders here. Um, I myself am a former athlete, believe it or not, not a Harlem Globetrotter, don't have the height for it or the skills in that way, um, but I can tell you what my coach always said to me. He said, "Don't leave it in the hands of the judges." And as a community, regardless of what is decided, casino or no casino, which vendor, which bidder, um, we have an ability and a responsibility to prevent problem gambling in our community. Um, I have left a number of educational materials and resource cards in English and Spanish out on the, um, table out front, and we provide free workshops to any interested group who wants to learn about responsible gambling, because that does exist, as well as problem gambling. And so, that is funded by, uh, the Lake County, um, Board, as well as the state, and so, please take advantage of it. This is our community.
Time, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, my name is, uh, Liz Alvaron, and I'm a lifelong, uh, Waukegan resident with, uh, I'm an active parent of a child in Waukegan School District 60. Um, I'm concerned with the education, not just for my child, but all of the children, and what contributions can be committed to our school district, um, with the casino. I'm not here to say whether I'm for or against the casino in Waukegan. I'm, what I am here to say is that, um, Waukegan, uh, should be able to accept a casino and proposal, and when that is built, uh, I'm interested in knowing what the, uh, commitment will be to the educational system for District 60. Um, our school district is in dire need for assistance and funding in areas that are outside of the normal educational learning process, such as our at-risk population, which includes homelessness, bilingual, and special education. There are many factors that come into play as well with each one of those situations, such as counselors, therapy, translators, et cetera. As a result, we would like to see a solid foundation that, uh, leads to substantial annual contribution to Waukegan Public Schools and growing them. Additionally, it was mentioned in, uh, one of the bids that there may be a funding for an after-school tutoring program, and this should really be mainly for Waukegan students, and for the program to be substantial and long-term, so that the program will be successful and long-lasting for our kids to grow up. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lydia Lewis, and, uh, I am a Waukeganite, as the other gentleman said, born and raised in Waukegan. And I am here in support of North Point Casino, because I already know what North Point is doing, reaching out to the local businesses and individuals. Um, I'm also the director of Small Business Development, and I know the struggles that the small businesses in Waukegan have. And North Point is committed to helping us to make sure that the local businesses and individuals are going to be a part of this process. The other presenters mentioned working with the unions. As you know, North Point never mentioned the unions, because everyone in here, if you don't know, working with the unions means nothing for the local people. Now, you all should know that. Unions are the bullies. They're gonna come in here, there're not gonna be any local hiring, there's not gonna be any locals, local business owners as a part of that project. So, I am in support of North Point, because North Point is a Waukegan, um, interest is in this project. They're gonna make sure that everything is done exactly like they said they were gonna do it, and I know because I'm gonna be a part of it as well. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sean White, a local business owner on the downtown area of Genesee Street. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'd like to implore the city of Waukegan to bring a casino. Bringing a casino to Waukegan will bring hope, not only to Waukegan, but surrounding communities with jobs, contracts, and opportunities. However, I do not stand here naive. Casinos do bring its problems. However, with the right infrastructure and oversight, we can together overcome the problems associated with casinos. Opportunities are elusive. Waukegan has the opportunity to take this opportunity to make it, shape it, and form it into a concept that would help provide for future generations to come. Again, this city of progress, don't stop the city from moving forward. As a small business owner, I don't fear the casino, I fear the city not moving forward for the benefit of the community. So, I ask you to pick a casino that every stakeholder gets a slice of the pie. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Alyssa Pimental. I'm a local Realtor. I've worked with Waukegan Public Schools, Waukegan Park District, and I also document homelessness in Waukegan. I am from Waukegan, my husband is a barber in Waukegan. I love Waukegan, and I understand why you guys want Waukegan, because real estate-wise, the location is flawless. And we know that Waukegan is great. And no matter who comes in, all I ask, by the way, I'm with North Point, all I ask is that you guys, especially North Point, because in Jesus' name, you will win, okay? So, all I ask with that is that you guys don't build the amphitheater, but that you bring something to the arts district here in downtown Waukegan, that you somehow traffic the people and the entertainment, and the entertainment down here into this beautiful strip that we have, which is the arts district. We have a theater already, we have great, great venues for food, like Wild West Grill already. We have everything that you need here. Just somehow do the casino thing and the casino thing, but bring people to Waukegan. Our property value needs to go up and our property taxes need to go down. I'm tired of showing people houses that don't want to come to Waukegan, okay? They want to go to Gurnee. Make it so that we can bring them here, because we are definitely, definitely worth it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Patterson. I'm living in Waukegan, I have been living for 33 years. My wife, my children grew up here, my wife's been a lifelong resident. We're a part of the community, and I think right at the moment, the city is moving in the proper direction, it's going forward. I wanted to be part of that, I ran for alderman. I've got a business downtown, your this-and-that shop on 127 Water Street, thank you. And I also endorse North Point. Number one reason, local people who want the city to go forward, and that's about it. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Juan Carlos Hernandez, and while you have heard from some of my colleagues at Rivers's Plains, I'd like to read, uh, into the record a testimonial from Councilman R. Daniel Lovell, talking about the impact our company has had in Pittsburgh. Dear Mayor Cunningham and City Council members, it's my pleasure to offer support for Rivers Casino and Rush Street Gaming to develop and operate a casino in Waukegan. On behalf of the city of Pittsburgh, I am happy to represent the residents and business of Council District 6. Since Rivers opened in 2009, I've developed relationships with the owners, leadership, and team members at Rivers Casino. They have conducted themselves with the utmost reliability and integrity and the public's best interests, especially with regard to the ongoing development and maintenance of Pittsburgh's riverfront. Notably, Rivers Casino has also helped to support an important goal of my office, creating job opportunities in the city. More than half of Rivers Casino's approximately 700-member workforce is comprised of Pittsburgh residents, and more than 80% reside in Allegheny County. Hiring locally and maintaining high operational standards are vital to the success of Rivers Casino and the city of Pittsburgh. As one of our most generous community contributors and one of our strongest producers of tax revenue, we count Rivers among the best businesses in Pittsburgh. I applaud Rivers Casino's sustained growth and the future addition of the Landing Hotel, which represents more high-quality local jobs, increased tax benefits, and greater opportunities for community partnership. With continued career opportunities like those offered by Rivers Casino and the Landing Hotel, people will keep returning to our city. For those reasons and more, I respectfully ask that you consider Rivers Casino's as your preferred community partner for Waukegan. Many thanks and much appreciation. Sincerely, R. Daniel Lovell.
Good evening, my name is Celia Demo, and I'm a lifetime Waukegan resident. If you are a resident of Waukegan, please stand up. Wave, do whatever. Mayor, council members, these are the people that you serve, and don't forget that, because today, and you guys, please sit down. Today, we had Rivers Casino come in with a busload of people, we've had some very eloquent speeches on behalf of individuals that were not here today. We had other proposals from great groups that didn't feel the need to bus in people into our meeting, and it's, again, it's a public meeting, and I do appreciate that. But you need to listen to the people of Waukegan and what we want. There are a lot of really good proposals tonight. Um, I hope you, whoever wins is successful, but again, please remember that you're doing this for Waukegan and not for Rivers Casino, because that has really made me angry tonight. That's it, thank you.
Hi, I'm Nicole Martinez, I'm a lifelong resident of Waukegan, and, um, I'm here actually to address our city council members. We have had a lot of vendors here today, um, come and do a lot of great presentations, but you guys have one chance to get this right. I'm not gonna say whether or not I agree or disagree with the casino, um, I believe it's gonna happen, and so, you have one chance now to do the right thing. And we heard a lot today about revenue, and we heard a lot about, you know, how many slots, how many tables, they're all gonna do that, right? You can look at one versus the other, they're all gonna do that. One of the things I want everyone to think about is, what is the main goal of what we're trying to do here, right? What are you looking at strategically? Because they're all gonna bring in the money, but who's gonna bring in the business? Who's gonna bring in the people into our community and are gonna lift up our community? Because that's really what this is all about, okay? Right now, you guys have made a decision to put this, to put this casino in Fountain Square. I want you to think about what traffic is going to be coming into our community and visiting our community, right? And where are people gonna be going? They're not gonna be visiting Genesee Theater, right? They're not gonna be coming to our restaurants, right? So, we're at the mercy now of these casinos and hoping that they will partner with our businesses. You've put us now in the hands of these casinos versus looking. We have got wonderful lakefront. Somebody made a mention here, one of the vendors made a mention of, you know, "You're here in Waukegan, you know, we gotta draw people here." We have a draw, we have a lakefront, we've got an arts district, we have the Genesee Theater, we are not using it. So, as you're moving forward and looking at this, don't put us at the mercy of all of these vendors, and look at what do we have to offer, because Waukegan has a lot to offer, and look at what are we doing to drive business here, and we're not at their mercy, they should be at ours and looking at what, what they can do for us.
Hi, my name is Erica Thomas, and while you've heard from our previous colleagues from Rivers Casino, I would like to read into the record a testimony from the Philadelphia Council President Darryl L. Clark, talking about the positive impact they've had in his city. Dear Mayor Cunningham and the City Council members, with the news that you are in the planning stage of building a casino in Waukegan, I am writing and highly recommending Rush Street Gaming as a developer and operator of this venue. As Council President of the city of Philadelphia, I have witnessed firsthand what Sugar House Casino has done for my district. Since the casino broke ground in 2009, it not only created local construction jobs, but it was a springboard into a permanent jobs, as well as a catalyst for improvement into the neighborhoods and surrounding communities. When Rush Street Gaming started its project in Fishtown section of Philadelphia, the area consists of many vacant warehouses and empty lots. Since Sugar House ignited an entertainment renaissance that was highlighted by Forbes Magazine in a featured title, "How Fishtown, Philadelphia Became America's Hottest New Neighborhood." Sugar House continues to be proud community partners and a highly visible and many incentives throughout the city. The casino supports both financially and through volunteer hours, the Police Athletic League, Susan G. Coleman, Philly's Pride Parade, the festival, and Red, the Red Cross, and the Urban League of Philadelphia, as well as numerous neighborhood groups and community. Urban League of Philadelphia, as well as numerous neighborhood groups and community development corporations, just to name a few. Sincerely, Council President Darryl Clark, City of Philadelphia.
Good evening, my name is Tasha Evans and while you may have heard from some of my colleagues from Rivers Casino, I would like to read into record a testimonial from Mayor Gary McCarthy, talking about the impact of our company has had in Schenectady, New York. Dear Mayor Cunningham and City Council members, I understand that your city will be hosting a casino development. Congratulations. I am the mayor of Schenectady in the capital region of New York. Our city is proud to be the location of a destination casino developed and run by Rush Street Gaming. Rivers opened to the public in February 2017 and has been a tremendous success for our city. I started working with Neil Bloom and Greg Carlin of Rush Street more than two years before the opening. I have always been impressed with their transparency and ability to deliver on what they said they were going to do. From day one, the Rush Street team demonstrated true professionalism, a willingness to work closely with us and a delivery of a product that was on time, a project that was on time. It was clear that our project wasn't their first. They really knew what they were doing, down to every last detail. Rivers has been a catalyst for economic development and tourism in the area and has created numerous opportunities for our residents. Rivers has a strong commitment to hiring and training local vendors. Rush Street has a marketing arrangement with multiple local entertainment venues, including Proctors and a completely refurbished Vaudeville Theaters in downtown Schenectady. Very truly yours, Mayor Gary McCarthy.
Everyone, everyone's probably going to be doing thirty seconds to forty-five seconds, they've agreed, because we have a hard cutoff at eight. Thank you.
Thirty seconds. I'm Karen Pap, a resident of Waukegan for forty-three years and married to a man that was born here. We saw a lot of money flying around today. It looks really exciting for Waukegan, but I don't believe in all the numbers until we have an analysis of what our police costs are going to be, what our fire costs are going to be, and what is the social impact to Waukegan. And we would like that presented to the residents of Waukegan.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Palmer. My company's Paint Boys. I was a laborer for years, I was a painter, union painter, union laborer for years. Me and Mr. Webb, we did work at the Harris Casino, I think we painted over a hundred thousand square feet. Me and Mr. Bullard, we've done forest preserve and a lot of different stuff in the area. But the thing that concerns me is that when they did the decommission at the nuclear plant.
Thank you.
A hundred workers came from Chicago.
Thank you.
Went right past my house. Same thing with a couple of other jobs here. So I'm concerned with the work passing.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ralph Peterson, community, very outspoken community activist. I was a critic against the casinos from the beginning, but it's clear and evident that they're here, they're here already and that they're coming. Now, so the stance I take at this point is which vendor is going to be what's best for the community. I like what I've been hearing from Mike Bond. One reason I'm gonna have a meeting with him is because he's a neighbor in Gurnee and if he's gonna provide the services that the black community need, then I'm on board.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth. I am concerned about the crime in Waukegan and I am concerned about the city not being able to do anything about the panhandlers harassing the people here in our community and how are they going to keep us safe if they can't do anything about that? How are we going to be safe going to the casino or keeping our community safe here? And I have three children, that is my main concern.
Hello, I'm Jack Dye. I'll be very, very brief. I'm asking city council to do a lot and I want you guys to look and pass proposals. Those are sales pitches, everybody. They're going to give you the best foot forward, they're going to tell you they're going to lose money, they're going to tell you it's not paid for what they're looking for. What you really need to pay attention to, do your homework, aldermen, look through the numbers, make sure they're real. That's all I'm going to ask of you. Do your homework and we'll see where the chips fall. Thank you.
Maryam Graham, I don't have a speech. We want to thank all the investors. We want to make sure we choose the right investor. If we want to put the money for education in a bucket that will give compound interest, the streets of Waukegan seems as it's shifting, especially in the fountain area, Green Bay and Fourteenth Street. How will that traffic affect our streets? Wondering if a fella needs a job, will you be supportive integrating them back to community?
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Oscar Hernandez. I live in Fountain Square and a Ross and Franklin University student. I came here today with no speech intended, but I saw a lot of showboating here by the whole fact of busing in all these individuals and just paying off, it seems like, all these individuals here. I do not support North Point and Rivers here with this kind of display and I think it should be very much, attention should be paid to the proposals and such and make sure whatever's on the contract, that's what goes on.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Diana Burda and I just want to say that Rivers stole the community time. This was our community time, Rivers came in and stole community time and that was wrong. We are the ones who are going to shoulder the burden of all of this and they came in and took it, so please keep that in mind. Now, I am sorry, aldermen, but you have a big, big task upon you. You already know what matters, the people. I'm proud that you guys are our aldermen and you guys will do a great job.
Well, everybody, wow, we did it. We did it. Give yourselves a round of applause, come on. All right? Well, thank you, everybody, for coming out, giving all of your information as we prepare to make the decision, was in the best interest of our city and as I said before, we're looking for an entertainment center, not just a casino. Thank the aldermen, thank the presenters and thank all of you for being here. I was also informed that if you still want to make public comment, you can still do that through the website, casino@waukegan.gov. Again, casino@waukegan.gov. You can send the, I'm sorry? And there are also forums that are located at the rear as you're exiting. Again, thank you, everyone. And everyone, let's give our big, let's give a big round of applause to our host, to Genesee Theater. Thank you. Good night, everyone.